Good evening, I'd like to call the December 11th, 2012 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. I want to wish everybody good evening and Merry Christmas, and thanks for taking the time to come down here with us this evening. We're in compliance tonight with the open meeting law, of course, and this meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We're live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m. the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. If you could please stand now and join us for the Pledge Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening in Clackamas, Oregon, there was a shooting, and I'm sure that we know that there's been two confirmed dead in a mall, and more people were shot, so if we could please, at Christmas time, take a moment of silence for the lives lost, for the families affected, and most importantly, for the children who had to witness such a thing during the holidays. So, just a moment, please. Thank you. Thank you. And Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Chair Quinn?
Here.
Vice Chair Flengus?
Here.
Commissioner Goines?
Commissioner Truesdale?
Here.
Commissioner Moody?
Here.
Commissioner Schlotman?
Present.
Commissioner Bona?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and the review process. If appropriate, please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. And also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can have a nice, smooth meeting. Again, I thank you. Under public comments, all comments made under this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items, and if there's any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda, we can do that now. So if there's anybody that would like to speak, we could come forward now. And being that I am the chairwoman for the last night of the City of Las Vegas Planning Commission, I choose to speak now. And I want to thank all of you that work so hard on the planning staff. I don't think people realize the amount of work that goes into this meeting. And to make someone like me know what I'm talking about, it takes Director Flynn, and Mr. Gepkeke, and these ladies, and my dear friend, Lucian. And, so, thanks. So we're to move on, because everybody will be tired later, and nobody will care. So, thank you all. You all mean a lot to me. We'd like now for my friend, Vice Chairman, soon-to-be the Chairman, Commissioner Flengus, to give us the motion, the minutes from last meeting. If we could vote on those, please.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Please vote. Post. And that passes, showing Commissioner Goines is stuck in traffic, and he's not here to vote on that right now, so, but he'll be here soon. Moving on to item number six. Any items from the Planning Commission's staff and/or the applicant that wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. So what we do now is we move on to our housekeeping items, and there are any items that the commissioners, the staff, applicants, or any members of the public here that would like to pull forward to action, staff.
Chairwoman Quinn, items 21, 22, and 38, the applicants for those items have requested they be obeyed to the February 12, 2013 Planning Commission Meeting. And item 40, the applicant requested that item be obeyed to the January 8, 2013 Planning Commission Meeting.
21, 22, and who?
21, 22, and 38.
And 38. Okay, thank you, Mr. Gepkeke. If there's no one here that wishes to speak on any of these items, Commissioner Flengus, if we could please have a motion on that.
Madam Chairman, for items number 21, 22, and 38, I move to have those obeyed to the February 12, 2013 Planning Commission Meeting. As to item 40, I move to that it be obeyed to the January 8, 2013 Planning Commission Meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Flengus. Please vote. Post. That motion also passes, showing that Commissioner Goines is abstaining at this time. We move on now to what's called our consent items, and consent items are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be enacted by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commissioner, member of the application, so-to desires. They're all related, there's 7, 8, and number 9. Number 7 is EOT 47211. The applicant is Copper Sands Incorporated. The owner is Rancho Torrey Development LLC. For possible action on a request for an extension of time on an approved special use permit, this special use permit is 39488 for a 120-bed convalescent care center at 4660 North Rancho Drive. This is in Councilman Ross's ward. Staff recommends approval. Moving on to number 8, which is related, is EOT 4712. The applicant also is Copper Sands Incorporated. The owner is the Rancho Torrey Pines Development LLC. For possible action on a request for an extension of time of an approved variance, the variance number is 39487, to allow 252 parking spaces where just 259 are required. Staff also recommends approval of this item. Moving on to number 9, it's EOT 47213. The applicant is Copper Sands Incorporated. The owner is the Rancho Torrey Development LLC. For possible action on a request for an extension of time of an approved major amendment, SDR 39485, to an approved site development plan review, SDR 16503, to replace buildings 3, 4, 5, and 6 with 1 two-story building, and to replace buildings 7 and 8 with 1 two-story building, and to add a second driveway access to Torrey Pines Drive. Staff recommends approval on all four of these items. May I have staff? No? No. Okay. Commissioner Flengus?
Madam Chairman, for the consent items portion of the agenda, I move to approve items number 7, number 8, and number 9.
Thank you. That motion is made for approval, and the one motion, one vote, please vote. And that motion passes, showing again that Commissioner Goines is running a little behind.
Madam Chair, those items are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on to the one motion, one vote, oh goodness, those weren't the one motion, one vote, those were something else. Oh, those were the consent items. We're moving on now to the one motion, one vote, and the following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They're considered routine, non-public and public hearing items. All public hearings, hearings, and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by the staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. And there's just two tonight, and they're also related items.
It's all the way through 17.
Oh, it's all the way through 17. Goodness. Oh, there's a few more than two. We'll start with the first two, number 10 and number 11, they are related, they're SUP 47222, and that's the applicant is the Mob Museum. Owner is the City of Las Vegas. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed beer/wine/coolers cultural establishment with a waiver to allow the use outside of 18B Arts District at 300 Stewart Avenue. This falls in Councilman Barlow's ward, and staff is recommending approval. Number 11 is a related item to this item, and it's SDR 47221. The applicant again is the Mob Museum. The owner is the City of Las Vegas. For possible action on a request for a major amendment to an approved site development plan review, which is SDR 27014, to convert a parking lot into a plaza on 2 acres at 300 Stewart Avenue, APN 13934-501007-C-V Civic Zone. This falls also in Councilman Barlow's ward. Staff again recommends approval. We move on to number 12, which is SUP 47283. The applicant is Watana Pongpen. Owner, 1201 South Las Vegas Boulevard LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a beer/wine/coolers on-sale establishment within an existing 4,500-square-foot restaurant at 1201 South Las Vegas Boulevard. This falls in Councilman Coffins Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. Number 13 is SUP 47285. The applicant is Tracy Davis. The owner is Tech Plaza LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for general personal service salon use at 2411 Tech Center Court in Suite Number 103. This falls in Ward 4, Councilman Anthony's Ward, and staff again recommends approval. Number 14 is SUP 47304. The applicant is Mrs. Rocket Tattoo. The owner, Crossroad Commons LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a tattoo parlor body piercing studio use within an existing beauty salon at 8975 West Charleston Boulevard, Suite 130. This falls in Councilman Beer's Ward 2. Staff recommends approval. Number 15 is SUP 47350. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a banquet facility in conjunction with an existing museum at 810 North Las Vegas Boulevard. This falls in Councilman Barlow's Ward 5. Staff recommends approval. Number 16 is SDR 47284. The applicant owner is the County of Clark, UMC. For possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed parking lot with waivers to allow no perimeter landscaping on the north and west property lines where 8 feet is required at 812 Willow Street. This falls in Councilwoman Tarkanian's Ward 1. Due to the redistricting, and staff is also recommending approval on this item. There is one more in our one motion, one vote, and that is number 17, SDR 47291. The applicant is Hoon Ma. Owner, S Sahara Edmund Plaza LLC. For possible action on a request for a major amendment on a plot plan review, Z0032-82, to increase the height of an existing building by adding a 4-foot-tall parapet wall on the south and east sides at 5310 West Sahara Avenue. This falls in Councilwoman Tarkanian's Ward 1. Staff again recommends approval. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on any of these items? If so, please come forward. If not, we will close the public hearing, and we will entertain...
Madam Chair, if I might, you've already announced it, but because of recent action by City Council in redistricting, which was approved last week, there are a number of items on this agenda that were originally advertised as being in a certain ward, and because of the redistricting are another ward. You've already announced that item number 16 was originally designated as being in Ward 5. That actually now, with the redistricting, is being Ward 1. There is a number of items throughout the agenda, and I'll announce those individually as the evening goes on.
Thank you, Director. Commissioner Flengus?
Madam Chairman, for the one motion, one vote portion of the agenda, I move to approve items number 10 through 17.
Thank you, please vote. Thank you, that motion, it's been posted, and it passes, and it shows that Byron is still running a little bit late, so he's not here.
Madam Chair, items 10 through 17 are all final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
At this time, I'm gonna, if it's okay with Director Flynn, I apologize for not asking you sooner, but I'd like to move up number 42, which is SDR 47324. The applicant owner is the Culinary Workers Union Local 226. For possible action on a request for a site development plan review for an existing 2,160 square-foot modular office building, and waivers of the downtown centennial plan setback and architectural design standards at 1630 South Commerce Street, C2 General Commercial. This falls in Councilman Coffins Ward 3. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have your report at this time? And I apologize for pulling it up early, I mean, without telling you.
Chairwoman Quinn, the applicant is requesting this review to allow a previously-approved temporary modular structure to remain permanently on the site as it is. Waivers of the downtown centennial plan are required for setback in architectural design standards as the building is required to meet the current standards. Staff recommends denial, the request as the building could be upgraded to minimize the impact of the waiver requests, including painting it to match other buildings on the site, and screening of mechanical equipment. In addition, the ramp at the front of the building, the stairs at the rear could be integrated into the overall design of the building to give it a more permanent appearance. Please note that there are letters, or there are additional letters of support since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Gepkeke. Good evening, Mr. McDonald.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners? Michael McDonald, representing the Alpha Omega Strategies, representing the Culinary Union, out here today. What we're here for is the, as we've had directed, we are here to make this modular, you see here today, more permanent fixture. Due to the economy, we've been unable to come up with our permanent building, which hopefully someday we will, God willing, when Vegas recovers. In working with staff, I'd like to publicly thank staff, particularly Steve that was here tonight, and members of the Planning Commission that have worked with us on this. To beautify it, we matched the building, originally, if you see in the background, the Culinary 226, you see the building in the back, the blue. We've matched that trim with this trim to make it more pliable right to the building. And as many of you know, we have another modular on the other side that's already been permitted. All the staff recommendations, we've been in compliance with, if you drive by there now, it's already, all the recommendations have been done, upgrades. The only thing we could not do is the, right there, thank you very much, is the air conditioning units. We've worked with, members of my staff have gone out to talk with members of the school district to see how they screen theirs, and we've went back to the people that put this on, and due to the fact, the way these are manufactured, for whatever reason, we cannot screen it. But we will do whatever necessary to put up to point, does not bring it down. But right now, our manufacturer for this says we cannot screen this. Everything else has been upgraded. We've skirted and made permanent the stairs, as recommended by staff, and you now have a matching building.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Is there anyone here in the public, Mr. Farlow, that would like to speak on this item?
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street, and all in unison here. As former Commissioner Stephen Quinn said, "There is nothing so permanent as a temporary building." Thank you.
Aw, thank you, Mr. Farlow, remembering my husband. Is there anyone here else that wishes to speak on that item? So please come forward. If not, we'll close the public hearing at this time, and we will open it up to our Commissioners. Commissioner Schlotman, sir?
Yes, Madam Chair. I drove this project on the way over to the council chambers tonight, and, of course, it was starting to get dark. However, it is surrounded by quite a few warehouses and tall fences and other items within that neighborhood. What's your intentions? Are your intentions to keep this building permanently for forever at this site, or eventually build something?
Eventually, Commissioner, Madam Chair, through you. Commissioner, we'd love to have a permanent building here. That was our intention when I came before you in '05, I believe, '04, '05, to put this in. Obviously, the economy was in a different shape back then. Our growth at the Culinary was a lot, a faster rate. After we've had the collapse in late '07, '08, when the Vegas didn't recover as fast as we thought it would, obviously, our plans have been put on hold, so that's how, is to come in compliance with what the planning and also code enforcement said. That's why we're here today, sir.
Okay, Madam Chair, through you. And what items specifically did you comply with, with staff's recommendations that you were talking about?
Yes, sir. Again, I'd like to thank staff. They kind of walked us through this. We want to make it compatible. The trim, concern was for the neighborhood to have the trimming match. We didn't want it sticking out the way, like a sore thumb, if you will. You can see the red, does not match the Culinary's, its paint. So we went back, we painted it at the recommendation of planning and also code. And then also, the air conditioners, we had a problem with, that's the only one we could not comply with, sir. Everything else we did, the staircases on the south part of the building, we went back, we skirted it, made it permanent. So everything is directed, we pretty much complied with.
No further questions?
Thank you, Commissioner Truesdale, Commissioner Moody, sir?
I know this temporary building has been there for a while, and it'll be there probably for a while longer. The only comment I would have is, the waivers that were requested here, and the things that were requested, have come before this commission on other properties, in the general area of properties owned by the Culinary, and they've been the most vigorous opponents to those waivers on other properties. It doesn't mean I'm not going to support this, but...
Yes, sir.
In reality, whatever's good for the goose should be good for the gander, and they should, they should look at that when they, when they look at how they treat their neighbors and going forward.
All advice, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Bona, sir? Thank you. Commissioner Goines? Commissioner Flengus? Thank you. So by voting on this now, this means it's here forever, Mr. Gepkeke, or is there a review process, or what? I mean...
Chairwoman Quinn, this, this site review would be to allow the building to remain forever.
So, in other words, he never comes back? Okay, well, it would, it would just be my suggestion, if Commissioner Schlotman would agree with me, that we put some type of review on this, because forever's a very long time. That's just my suggestion. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we will be back.
You will?
Yes, ma'am.
How many years?
Hopefully, with the economy right now, I think we're looking, if I was helpful, probably about 15 years.
15?
It's fast, the Vegas couldn't recover, ma'am.
Oh, I'm thinking three.
If you can do that, you'd be, God willing, according to LVCVA, we're not quite there yet.
Did you say 15 years?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so...
It's based on the economy, ma'am.
Okay, let's listen to Commissioner Trinity, whose ward it is, but 15-year, that's cute. Funny.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion on SDR 47324, due to the fact that they have made a few modifications in trying to comply. However, they still don't comply totally, so I would agree a three-year review period. I would make a motion to approve based on a three-year review period, and hope that y'all would find a way to do something else with this site. Within three years, there could be a lot of developments in that neighborhood, and maybe we want to push this forward a little bit quicker.
Should've taken my five.
Well, questions I have, is it a permanent, the motion is permanent with a review? Is that correct, sir?
Madam Chair, if I might be able to clarify, with Commissioner Schlotman, I believe what you're asking to do is to have a required review at a public hearing to review the status of this building and conformance to the standards that we have listed in the staff report. And so, in order to clarify the motion, I might just state that this is to be a required review at a public hearing in three years from the date of approval.
I concur.
Thank you, Mr. Sir. Director, quick question. So is it permanent with a review to make sure that everything was up to standard, or is it just...
That is correct. What the action would be to approve the site plan with a required review.
So it's permanent, but needs a review to make sure...
Correct.
Okay, sir, thank you.
Excuse me, is that what you meant, Commissioner Schlotman? Permanent with a review of permanency?
Actually, I wasn't looking at making this a permanent building, just giving them an extension of time for three more years for their temporary structure, if that's possible.
In that case, then we would reword it that this approval is valid for a period of three years, at which time the applicant shall return before City Council and may file an extension of time application on the SDR.
Are you okay with that, Mr. McDonald?
We were looking for permanent based on, if it's okay with planning, that's the reason we're here, because planning came out and looked at, they didn't like the, actually, it was code, I apologize for planning. Code came out and looked at it, and said they didn't like the red stripe, they didn't like the air conditioners the way they were, and they also had a problem with the stairs. So that's how, that's how we got here today.
Well, the issue, Mr. McDonald, as you know, because you've sat here before, and you've, and you live in our ward, is that we can't make something permanent for you, and then say, down the street, around the corner, they can't have permanent too. So we have to have an even playing field here, just because we want this ward to grow and to look better and better, as of course you do, which has always been your goal. So I would think that three years, to just take another look at it, is really fair. You should've went with my five.
Well, I look at, yes, ma'am. I walked in with Councilman today, he was fine with it 100 percent. I apologize, Commissioner, I haven't a chance to get to you today, that's totally on me, I apologize. That's when Councilman Coffin did the same thing. He has the same concerns as neighborhood growth.
Thank you, sir. The motion's on the floor. Please repeat the motion, Commissioner. One more time.
There would be an added condition, which states that this approval is valid for a period of three years. After such time, if the applicant wishes to extend the use, then they shall file an extension of time application.
Thank you. The motion's on the floor, please cast your vote. And that motion passes and is posted.
And Madam Chair, this item will go forward to the January 16 City Council Meeting.
Yes. Thank you.
We all hope your father's feeling better.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Goines? No, no name, sir, number one.
Good night, Mr. McDonald. Moving on to item number 18, which was held in abeyance, is item 18, SUP 47009, applicant owner's Investment Solutions for Possible Action on a Request for a Special Use Permit for Proposed 12,000-Square-Foot Commercial Recreation Amusement Indoor Use with a Waiver to Allow the Use to Occupy 100% of the Total Floor Area where a Maximum of 35% is Allowed at the Southeast Corner of Red Coach Avenue and Volsom Street. This falls in Councilman Anthony's Ward 4. Staff is recommending denial. This is also in conjunction with a related item, number 19, which is an abeyance, SDR 47010, for possible action as a request for a Site Development Plan Review for a Proposed 12,000-Square-Foot Commercial Recreation Amusement Indoor Facility. Staff recommends denial at this time. Staff, may we please have your findings?
Chairwoman Quinn, the commercial recreation amusement indoor facility is proposed for the purpose of coaching baseball and softball to the public. The facility will feature eight batting cages and a potential bullpen for pitching practice inside a steel panel building with an open floor plan. Revised elevations have been submitted to depict a primarily steel panel building with an alternating base of painted EIFs and applied stone veneer with a metal roof. Although more aesthetically compatible than the original design, the building retains a somewhat industrial appearance due to the extensive use of steel and the lack of any fenestration. Due to the requested waiver to allow more than 35% of the total floor area to be dedicated to the use, and the requested exception of required parking lot landscape requirements, staff does recommend denial of the proposal. If approved, condition of approval, number two of SDR 47010, should be amended to reflect the building elevation date stamped 11/29/12.
Madam Chairman, just, I need to disclose, since the, an item similar to this came before this, on this item, I have since found out that a partner in a real estate transaction owns property within the notice area, and I will abstain on this item.
Oh, okay, thank you, Commissioner Truesdale. Good evening, applicant, please state your name and address for the record, and we'd like to hear from both of you, please.
I'm Dirk Nelson, 5855 Janelle Drive, 89149. I'm here representing the owners, Tom Wheeler and Dave Johnson. And with me, I have Curtis Leverie, which would be the guy that's running the academy.
Thank you. Good evening, Curtis.
Curtis Leverie, 5608 Great Gorge Court, Las Vegas, 89149.
So, how, would you like to tell us a bit about this project?
Well, the facility that we're trying to get built is a softball academy. We take on baseball as it comes, but generally, it's going to be designed towards training softball players in the local area. And it will also provide a safe haven for them to go to for after-school programs, for, there'll be a place there for them to do their homework. It's just going to be a good place for them to develop, not only as softball players, but as young women, and trying to move on with their education, especially towards college.
What are the hours, Curtis, of operation?
The hours of operation will be, well, it will close by 9 o'clock every night. During the summertime, we'd like to open up around 10 o'clock in the morning. During the school year... During the school year, we'll operate with basically school hours, we won't open till three o'clock in the afternoon to accommodate kids that get out of high school. At one-thirty, elementary kids don't get out till three-thirty. So, I guess from September till the end of May, or the first week of June, it will be from three o'clock in the afternoon till nine in the evening. In the summertime, it'll be about ten in the morning till nine in the evening.
Thank you very much. Looks like a nice project. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward now, and if not, we'll close the public hearing, we'll open it up to our commissioners. Seeing no one, Commissioner Flankas, sir?
Yeah, Madam Chairman.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. At the, you guys were here at the November thirteenth meeting, and I said I liked your project. My only concern was that you had the church to the east of you, that you didn't look so industrial with your building, and I asked you to go back and see what you could do to fix it up, and I like what I see on there, and I'm prepared to support this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Moody, sir?
Thank you. I'm reading in the staff analysis that one of the concerns was that the building elevations do not display a coherently designed and treated facade with a consistent level of detailing and finish for all sides of the building. Can you tell me what the two sides that we don't see in what we're looking at look like?
The other two sides, as you see on this diagram that's up there now, the east side is the very bottom, that side's the side that faces the church, which, the parking lot, the brick wall and everything on that side is very high, so as far as if you're up on the church side, you wouldn't even see that, but we don't have a problem if we have to, you know, match the east side with the west side as far as the rocks to bring that, so it looks the same. But it's on the east side, and it's, you won't see it because it is against the church parking lot, which has a brick wall.
Okay, I appreciate that. If you're willing to do that, I'd like to see that as a condition added, that all sides of the building would match, so that we would not have an inconsistent design.
Yeah, we don't have a problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Flankas?
Madam Chairman, seeing no further discussion on there, I would like to go ahead and move to approve item eighteen. And, Mr. Director, do we put the condition on the site development review or the SUP?
That would be correct, on the SDR application.
Okay, so at this juncture, I would move to approve item number eighteen, SUP 47009.
Thank you. That motion is for approval, please vote. Thank you. That motion passes, showing Commissioner Trusdell abstaining.
And Madam Chairman, I would move to approve item number nineteen, SDR 47010, with the added condition that all sides of the building match.
Thank you. That motion also is for approval, please vote. And that motion also passes, showing Commissioner Trusdell abstaining. Good luck to you, and thank you for coming down tonight.
Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas.
Madam Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days. Also, I would just like to add a note that on item forty-two, I incorrectly announced that it's going forward to the January sixteenth City Council meeting, the date is actually January the twenty-third.
Thank you. Moving on now to item number twenty, which is GPA four six five six five, which is a general plan amendment, public hearing, the applicant owners, the city of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request to adopt an updated trails element and revise the twenty-twenty master plan. This includes all wards. Staff recommends approval. Staff, Mr. Rankin, sir? Good evening.
This is the update to the trails element. The trails element is intended to establish the standard guidelines and objectives and priorities of the location, development, and maintenance of transportation trails, recreation trails, bicycle lanes, and other modes of non-motorized travel. NRS requires the inclusion of a recreation plan and a transit plan within the city's comprehensive plan, and this document, in conjunction with the parks and transit element, fulfills those requirements of state law. The master plan contains numerous goals, objectives, and policies pertaining directly and indirectly to trails and bike facilities. The trail element links the broad policies of the master plan to the other policy documents with respects to trails and bike facilities. This element combines the recreation and transportation elements to streamline and reduce redundancy. Currently, we, those are two separate documents, this will bring them into one. It will also amend certain trail alignments have been deleted, as they didn't match up with the other trail alignments, or were dead ends due to development. Several trail alignments have been added to connect with trails planned by the RTC or Clark County, so those trail sections were added. The designation of several alignments have been changed from multi-use transportation trails, which are twenty-foot sections, to pedestrian paths, which are ten-foot sections due to constrained rights of ways, and pedestrian path standards have been revised to reflect the complete street standards that were adopted as part of the Unified Development Code, and those standards are now a five-foot sidewalk with a five-foot landscape strip. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, and this does go on to City Council for their consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rankin. We'll open it now to the public. Good evening, Mr.?
Yes, thank you, Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. I'm looking on the staff report, page seven, the second and third items there. It says, "Add a multi-use transportation trail alignment adjacent to the south side of Marlin Avenue between Northeastern Avenue and Mojave Road." And the second thing is, "Add a multi-use transportation alignment adjacent to the east side of US ninety-five between Stewart and Charleston." And I'm not quite understanding what they're doing here, because...
Are you on page seven, Mr. Farlow?
I'm on page seven.
Thank you, sir.
And because that trail, when it comes, when it comes off of Maryland Parkway there, it runs on the south side of Elm Street, right under the freeway there, and then it runs there until you get to about, let's see, it would be twenty, it would be, let's see, it would be nineteenth, twenty, twenty, be Twenty-first Street, and then it crosses under the freeway, and then it goes on the north side of Marlin, and it runs into the mess we have at the tire shop there, which I'll address the RTC on Monday, on Thursday. So I'm not quite sure of what they're planning here. It doesn't make any, it doesn't make any sense.
I think Director Flynn knows, he'll tell you. Go ahead, Flynn.
Actually, I have a map, Mr. Farlow, that I can show you, which shows the two segments that were added there. One of the issues that we have with our trail system, as you're well aware, is we have a number of trails that dead-ended and didn't really go anywhere, and so the goal of doing the update was to make corrections to those areas. So I have a map which shows those two particular areas in terms of where we are realigning the trail and trying to make connections between there. So if you'll give me a minute, Mr. Farlow, I'll run down and show you.
That's going to be pretty hard to do. First of all, I want them to tear out that barrier that they got at Maryland Parkway. We'll start, we'll start at that thing. By the way, we need a new binder here. This bottom ring won't line up, and every time you try to flip a page, stuff goes all over the floor.
We'll start and adopt a binder program, okay?
Mr. Farlow, that's terrible. Just aggravating.
Well, yeah, well, the thing is, the pages hook on the bottom here, anyway.
Okay, well, I think what should happen, because this, when does this go to City Council, sir?
This would be scheduled to go to City Council on January the twenty-third.
Yeah, and I can do my bitchin' in the City Council.
I was, no, I don't want, no, Mr. Farlow, I was hoping, because you have, maybe if you could take a better look at it in the next couple of weeks, because I think you're just reviewing it now, and then when you come, when you come in front of them, you'll be more prepared, because I'm going to be quite honest with you, I don't know what you're talking about. So here's the deal, could you do that for me? Just look at it so you're more prepared for them? Thank you, Mr. Farlow.
Actually, Madam Chair, we'll be happy to sit down with Mr. Farlow and discuss...
Oh, that's so nice of you. They'd like to sit down and discuss it with you, Mr. Farlow, so could you make an appointment with the, with the planners?
I'll be at the RTC meeting.
Okay, thanks, Todd.
And Madam Chair, if I might also add to the staff report, that planning staff, on a couple of occasions, went out and actually toured the trails. Mr. Farlow, we invited you one time to come with us.
They went on bicycles.
I was in surgery at that time.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We missed having you there with us, but we did explore the city trails and look for areas that we could improve upon.
Thank you, Flynn, you did not invite me. Anyway, moving on, is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? If not, we're going to close the public hearing, and we're going to have a motion on this item from Commissioner Flankas. Do you have a motion, Commissioner Flankas?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I make a few comments before the motion?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I'm sorry, yes. I was hoping you would.
Thank you. I had the same questions Todd Farlow had, so maybe I can attend that meeting with Todd and Director Flynn, because a couple of those trails on the east side just didn't make a lot of sense to me, so if you could let me know when that would be. But in reviewing this, I didn't realize that our trail system here in Las Vegas was so extensive until actually reading this report and discovered the one hundred and thirteen mile Vegas Rim Trail that was recently approved, that surrounds the Vegas Valley. The city currently has one hundred and nineteen miles of bike lanes with one hundred and thirty-five miles proposed in upcoming years, in addition to many equestrian and pedestrian trails spread throughout the city. And this is encouraging, seeing that the city staff is being proactive and planning this out, and it's especially important in downtown Las Vegas, where the urban population is expected to increase exponentially within the next few years. The Nevada Bicycle and Pedestrian Advocacy Group is meeting tonight at Texas Station, which I was planning on trying to attend until I found out there's a conflict with planning and commission being on the same night, and they're discussing and giving an update on federal funding for bicycle and pedestrian projects, also a legislative update and a roundtable discussion on priorities for improving bicycling and walking trails here within the city and within the valley. Part of this report tonight that I reviewed discusses a complete street initiative, which I was also unaware of, which focuses on making our streets more pedestrian-friendly with complete and sidewalks, improving crosswalks, and allowing for the ADA accessibility ramps at the intersections. One of the primary focuses should be on, and especially for public works, to look at, should be on our high-traffic streets such as Charleston Avenue and Sahara. Within the past two years, I've seen two, three people in, or three individuals hit, and not including all the people that I'm unaware of. And there's simple things that we could do, such as Laguna Beach puts the flashing lights out with the solar panel, which might be more costly. This report in the complete street section also talks about using the rumble strips to warn motorists before they hit the crosswalks, and there's six very dangerous crosswalks on Charleston. And every time any of this comes up, I like to just reiterate that and anything that we can do from a planning perspective or a public works perspective and look at those areas, I think we should. However, there's many projects completed in the city, especially around downtown in recent years, and for this, I want to thank staff. And some of these projects in downtown include Boulder Plaza Trail, the Art Trail, Tortoise Trail, Entertainment Trail, the Scenic Byway Trail, the Cultural Corridor Trail, amongst many others. Through you, Madam Chair, I'd like to ask a question of staff, hopefully it'll be a simple one. The RTC currently is reviewing a mobility study for central Las Vegas, and it's supposed to be completed this month. Is that something that the city is working in conjunction on, and will we have the opportunity to review this at planning and commission? And is city staff aware if this report's still supposed to be completed in December of twenty-twelve?
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and answer that question.
Oh, thank you.
The city is a participant with the RTC in the mobility study. Currently, there is a link on the RTC website for those who live or work in the downtown area to complete a survey talking about their mobility needs. That survey, I believe, closes later this month. Once the survey is closed, then they will begin to generate the report. We do have members of the Department of Planning and also the Public Works Department who are attending the work group sessions on the mobility study, and so anything that comes out of that will also be integrated into our plans as well, so we are a participant in that process.
Thank you. No further questions?
Commissioner, I just want to thank you for taking the time to look so far into this, because I always thought of the things about trails being out, you know, in the western part of town or the eastern, the surrounding parts, I never really thought of it affecting us, and I also appreciate always, whether I'm here or not, that you keep close attention to the ADA and the people on the wheelchairs and the sidewalks and Lucian, that would be you, because it's important to me always, and so thank you, because I really didn't even know what was going on until you just explained it, so I appreciate it very much. Do we have a motion on this, please?
Madam Chair, one question before we go to a motion. These updates to the master plan always come through, and they're very comprehensive, and I know staff spends a lot of time on them, and they're mandated under NRS. I just, I'm curious, is there any funding downward from the state with these mandates? Because, I mean, staff spends an incredible amount of time, and the safe streets, just trying to manage the data is amazing.
Madam Chair, to respond to the question, no, there is no funding that comes along with the mandate from the state. It's something that we provide as a service.
I just wanted to make a suggestion before the motion as well, you know, for future. I think when there's something that's this intense and for so much of us to learn so much, I think we almost need like a couple-hour little seminar in the afternoon where we don't take the public's time and we don't take the applicant's time and the people here, because I would, you know, I think this is something we would love to spend an afternoon over and talk about, so if maybe next year, it just might be a good idea, Director Flynn, if you think about it, it's up to you, I might not be here, but whatever. Anyway, we'll see. Okay, so we'd like to have a motion, please.
Madam Chairman, pertaining to item number twenty, GPA four six five six five, I move to approve.
Thank you. That motion is for approval. The motion, it's been posted and it passes, and thanks again, Mr. Farlow, for your input, we appreciate it very much.
Madam Chair, that item will go forward to the January twenty-third City Council meeting.
Thank you. We're moving on now to related items twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, the first being number twenty-three, which is a variance of four seven three zero zero, applicant owner, Three Ten Ninth Street LLC, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a zero-foot rear yard setback where twenty feet is required, and a six-foot side yard setback where ten feet is required at Three Twenty South Ninth Street, Ward Three. This is in Councilman Coffin's Ward. Staff is recommending approval of this item. This item is related to item number twenty-four, which is variance four seven three zero one, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow an eight-foot tall screen wall, four feet solid in the front yard, where a maximum of five feet with two feet solids is allowed, and that's also in Councilman Coffin's Ward, and staff also recommends approval. Number twenty-five is SUP four seven two nine seven, again, a related item for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a private school primary. Staff recommends approval on this action as well, following in Councilman Coffin's Ward as well. Item number twenty-six, related as well, SDR four seven two nine six, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for proposed twenty-six thousand one hundred and forty-five square foot private school primary and individual care center within three existing buildings and with an associated encroachment into the public right-of-way. Staff recommends... Staff recommends approval on this item as well. And if we may at this time, please have the staff report.
Madam Chair, before we start, I am currently under contract with the applicant, and so therefore, I'll be abstaining on this matter.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rankin?
Madam Chair, this site is currently parking impaired with 43 parking spaces where 87 are required for the previous use. The change in use will reduce the parking impairment to 25 parking spaces. Also, the current existing condition of the previous church, it was constructed in 1946, and the setbacks are legally non-conforming. This variance will entitle the building to and make it conforming. The variance in regards to the eight-foot screen wall is not along the portion, is, does not apply to the portion along Ninth Street, and staff supports this request as the applicant is providing a screen wall to address safety concerns with a preschool and elementary school. Staff recommends approval of the overall development proposal and all related entitlement requests, as the use can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the existing and surrounding land uses. The site is physically suitable for this type and intensity of land use proposal. Staff recommends approval of all applications. Please note, we received additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Good evening, applicant.
Good evening, Todd Kessler, 300 North Las Vegas Boulevard, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89101, here on behalf of the applicant. It's my honor to bring forward this, the series of agenda items. This is an incredible adaptive reuse that's occurring in downtown. This facility, if you occur, used to be the downtown senior center and housed various nonprofits and various senior-related programs. And we were the winner of an R F P from the city when they were disposing of the asset, and have now, in turn, are going to reprogram it for a early childhood development center. So we have a few various items that are on here to help us. As staff indicated, this was a parking impaired location with some setbacks already existing, so we're finding ourselves in a situation where we have to come forward and ask for some of these things. It's an exciting time downtown, and this is one of the many amenities that needs to be offered to help our downtown thrive. This is an incredible opportunity. I would have had the operator of the facility here tonight, but she was in a branding, visioning workshop on this project, so she couldn't attend. She's met with some of the council members and some of the staff members before to understand how this is somewhat different than other early childhood development centers. I wish I had the knowledge base to explain that, but all I can say is it's very innovative. It's very technology-driven, and it's going to be an incredible asset to downtown. I'd like to commend staff for all their hard work on this specific item. We came up against some situations, and we came up with some creative solutions, and I think this is yet another thing that we can say that, you know, the city is a great city to work with from a staff perspective. I'd also just, Chairperson Quinn, take this opportunity to thank you for your hard work and dedication. I don't know if I'll, I'll be up here for some few items, but it's somewhat of a thankless job, and so we're here to thank you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. I know you really mean that.
Yes. And so, I'm here to answer any questions specifically about the operations or it might, or further detail about the school, if you have some.
Good evening, Mr. Farlow.
Yes, thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 18th Street. Staff said that there was an opposition to this. I would like to hear, who wouldn't? I can't imagine anybody not wanting this to go through. I'm all in support of that. One other thing. Mr. Kessler drives a vehicle that everybody ought to take a look at. It's called an E4 or something. I happened to be riding beside it on the way up here and wondered what it was. It's really something, but I'm all for this.
I've gone green and have a fully electrical vehicle, so it's great to go around downtown. And it's one of the many initiatives that we're actually looking to place downtown. Downtown Project is doing a lot of different things.
What is it that you drive?
I drive a, somewhat of a golf cart that is fully electric. It's street legal on streets less than 35 miles per hour.
I wish we could get one for Todd.
Yeah. And one of the many initiatives that are not here tonight, but that we're working on is some incredible bike sharing and car sharing programs that use similar style products and will be for amenity for all of downtown.
So getting back to your wonderful project, is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? If not, we're going to close the public hearing now, and we're going to open it up to our commissioners, and we'll start down here with Mr. Moody. Commissioner Moody, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have to say that I love the phrase "parking impaired." I'm going to use it to describe a few members of my immediate family.
Oh, thank, oh, I thought you were going to talk about me. Perfect. Thank you.
No. I don't know if there's any further discussion amongst our commissioners, but I'm prepared to-
Commissioner Goines?
I do have a few questions.
Commissioner Truesdale, sir?
It's a great idea to, I mean, it's a great opportunity to bring a school downtown, and I think some of the variances, while maybe a little bit self-imposed, because, I mean, I think you guys got some great architects and you can solve those problems, but the question I've got is, based on the number of projected students that you would have, do you meet the state's requirements for outdoor play area?
Yes, we do.
Okay. How many students do you expect to be?
I believe in the first phase, which is the initial portion of the, bottom portion of the buildings, let's just say there's two stories on one of the structures, I believe it's up to 100 kids, around 110 kids.
At ultimate build-out, what do you expect?
Within both floors and both phases, I believe it gets up to an additional 50 students, so about 160 students approximately.
Great. Thank you.
I just wanted, this is not a tuition school, this is a-
It is a tuition-based school.
Oh, it is a tuition school?
There'll be some certain aid aspects to it as well, but it is a tuition-based private school.
And remind me the grades again?
It starts with, up till kindergarten, and then as soon as this kindergarten class finishes, they then step to the first grade. And so the school will continue to grow as that first-
Till sixth?
-grade goes to second, to third, et cetera.
And then you'll stop at sixth grade?
Then it's, yeah, it's only for an elementary.
Okay.
I think elementary stops at eighth, but I'm not positive about that. No? Okay.
Okay, Mr. Kessler. Well, with that, we're looking for a motion, I guess.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With respect to item 23, V A R 47300, move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
That motion was for approval. That motion passes and is posted with Commissioner Trinity abstaining. Thank you.
Madam Chair, item 24, V A R 47301, also move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you. That motion was for approval, a yes vote is for approval. Please post. The vote's posted, it passes, showing Commissioner Trinity abstaining from this vote.
Item 25, S U P 47297, move for approval, subject to the conditions.
That motion is for yes, and for an approval, it passes and it's posted, showing Commissioner Schlotman abstaining.
And the last item in this grouping, item 26, S D R 47296, move for approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you. Yes vote for approval. And that motion passes, showing Commissioner Trinity also abstaining. Thank you, Mr. Kessler, for the kind words, and I hope you have lots more projects coming up here, and I hope I'm looking at you from this side.
Yeah, I'm here next, for the next item as well.
Madam Chair, if I could just put on the record that I-
Yes.
I think it's public knowledge, but I do say that as a board member of a nonprofit private school, the Meadow School, so it didn't affect my vote, and I did votes.
They should put you on the board, Commissioner Truesdale. I mean, never mind.
Madam Chair, that, those items were final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you very much. Moving on now here, oh, Mr. Kessler, we're moving on to number 27, 28, related items, variance 47302. The applicant owner is 210 Eighth Street LLC, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a solid, non-decorative, eight-foot screen wall in the front yard where maximum height of five feet with two feet solid is allowed at 210, 214, 218, South Eighth Street. This files in Councilman Barlow's Ward 5. Staff is recommending denial. The related item with this is number 28, S U P 47504, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for an alternate, alternative parking standard for four parking spaces where 33 are required for an existing apartment complex. Staff recommends approval on this item, and may we please at this time have the staff report, starting with number 27?
Before we begin the staff report, I just need to announce that these two items, number 27 and 28, were advertised as being in Ward 5. With the redistricting effort, these are now located in Ward 3.
And Madam Chair, before we get the staff report, I will be abstaining on this matter seeing as how I have turned in a proposal for limited construction services on this project.
Oh, well, that's nice. Thank you for that. So can we have the staff report, please, on, let's start with number 27, because that was the denial.
Well, the application itself is proposing to convert an existing 33-space parking lot into a plaza for the residence of a 36-unit apartment complex. The complex will be used to house students on a rotating three-month basis. The students would attend on a proposed skill center that is slated for the southwest corner of Fremont Street and Eighth, Fremont Street and Eighth Street. Complex will provide a vehicle for resident share use, and no private vehicles will be allowed. The applicant is also requesting to install a solid eight-foot tall fence in the required front yard, where a see-through five-foot tall fence is the maximum permitted. Staff does recommend approval of a special use permit to allow the reduced parking under an alternative parking standard, as the use does not require additional parking. Staff, however, is unable to support the request for the variance for the wall height and is recommending denial of that application. Please note, we have received additional protest and support since publication.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rankin. Good evening, Mr. Kessler.
Good evening again. I'd like to talk a little bit about this project and give you an understanding about what it is. We purchased the, this is for Downtown Project again, and we purchased the 36-unit apartment building on Eighth Street and wanted to convert it to a mentorship program. What it is, it's a high-tech mentorship program. It's sponsored by some of the largest tech companies in the world, and basically what it does is it brings students in for three months at a time. It gives them a full mentorship, how to start a technology company from A to Z. So it takes you as a program, you have to qualify for the program, you have to be recommended for the program, and then you come to Vegas, you learn all the stuff, and then our hope is that you stay in Vegas and start your startup, and that's kind of the thought process behind here. And so as part of that process, we interviewed a lot of the potential candidates for this program and ment, or the mentorees, in essence, and asked them some of the amenities that they would like to have, given the fact that we were going to be moving them in here for three months and seeing some of the things that they wanted. And so the site plan that you see here is of, is a direct correlation of some of the input that we got from some of the folks. We actually flew some of the folks in, showed them this product, got their concerns and ideas, and so it was a big, a lot of feedback from the potential candidates were incorporated in this design. What you'll see is here is some amenities such as fountains and sitting areas, bocce court seems to be a popular item at the moment, horseshoes, things of that nature. And so what we did is we removed all the parking, as they indicated, and made it more of a garden-like setting. The reason we removed the parking is because these people will not be coming with cars. We were going to be actually supplying one community car as part of the overall facility, so if you had to go to Costco or Lowe's or something else, you have actual, a vehicle to do that. So that's the reason for the rationale behind the removal of all the parking. And then, as it relates to the fence, if you can, if you see along Eighth Street, we created some, what I'll call some community areas or some garden-like settings, which is, you'll see with a couple of tables and a fountain. And in incorporating that design, we wanted to make it somewhat private, and hence the request for the fence height. And in essence, this is yet another, you know, project that's going to continue to keep the momentum going downtown, is going to bring a new bunch of people who have never experienced Las Vegas. We get to teach them a little bit, show them our town, and we're excited about this project. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward now. And if not, we'll close the meeting and open it up to the planning commissioners. I'm curious about why the wall? Why this big eight-foot wall? Because what is the fire code, Mr. Gepkeke? Isn't it like, don't they have to see in at a certain point? Does this wall encompass the whole place or just the sides? I'm not real versed on this project. I didn't look at them, just tell you the truth. So does it go all the way around it, or where does it go?
It goes all the way along the Eighth Street portion, and I-
The Eighth Street?
Yeah, and I don't believe that there's a fire-related help, fire safety issue as far as the fence height is concerned.
No.
There's numerous existing masonry walls in downtown of that.
Right, so we have the eight-foot wall down Eighth? And then what?
Yeah, and then in between that, there is a gate for fire access, actually.
Right. That's-
And that's see-through, that's-
That's see-through. And then is that-
It's wrought iron, so it's-
Right. And then is that the only eight-foot wall?
Let me confirm. I believe it's on the backside as well.
It's on the backside?
And it's, that's an alleyway.
That's the alleyway?
There's an alleyway between what I call-
Okay, I'm just kind of getting my bearings, sir, because I'm a little off-base today.
Sure, a budget motel and the facility.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Mr. Moody, Mr. Truesdale, sir, commissioners?
It's an interesting project, actually. I like the idea behind it. But if you're going to let people experience living in the urban core of Las Vegas and the Downtown Project is going to buy into the downtown, walling it off isn't going to be the solution. Being inclusive is going to be the solution. I just think we don't need eight-foot block walls along street faces, just personal.
Thank you, Commissioner Truesdale. Commissioner Goines, Commissioner Bonar. You're awful quiet tonight, Commissioner Goines.
I'm getting ready to get fired up here, Commissioner Quinn, so-
Oh, I'm ready. Okay.
Hold your seat, cushions.
I'm holding. Commissioner Bonar, sir?
Through you, Madam Chair. It's a unique project. I think it, I kind of agree with Commissioner Truesdale as well, I think. I understand the reasoning for it, but from what I see, it says "screen wall," so to me, it's going to, is it, is it solid block, or is it, are you going to be able to see through it at certain points?
It's solid along, until it hits the gate. So it is solid during the masonry portion, and then for approximately, I'd have to look at the dimensions, but there's probably 15 or 20 feet length. There's a typical wrought iron, every four inches type pole that exists. So there's a lot of visibility in. It's just that the higher walls highlight in these garden-type areas that we're talking about.
Well, I think it's, I think it's, it's the best word, way to say it. It's kind of cute. It's a little different than the 800-square-foot studio that we used to call or used to try to convince us ourselves that it's long-term living, but I think this adds an ambiance down there, and I'd like to see more of them coming. I really like the concept of a community car. I think more people should, even if they can go into a fourplex or something bigger of that type, to utilize a community car and the walkability of downtown, so good job.
Yeah, and to back up with Mr. Farlow, say, we're actually looking to put one of those electric vehicles over there as well.
Thank you.
Since his name's Todd, too, he probably could get in your office and get yours.
Come by.
Okay, so here we go. Is there a motion? Commissioner Moody?
If you don't mind, Madam Chair, if I can follow up with one question, I'll make this three-Tod conversation.
The three Tods.
Mr. Kessler, through the, through the chair, what would an eight-foot wall do for you that a five-foot wall would not, to create this feeling that you've described here?
I think, you know, there's a certain level, I mean, five feet is right here. I'm five foot, I wish I was five foot nine, but I'm five foot eight, so it's about right here. And so there's, there's some level of additional zone for the people that are taller and the heads that are walking by. It's kind of, it creates, if it was six feet, you know, if you would agree, I would make it six feet, but it's, the five, the difference between five and six is somewhat dramatic because of the constant moving that occurs on the sidewalk. I'm sorry, I'm just not talking in front of the microphone.
I'll take your six feet. That's exactly what I was looking for, was some compromise there. So if we can make a condition that'll make that- So if we can make a condition that'll make that six feet, I can support this.
I would agree to that condition.
Is that going to be your motion then, Commissioner?
That will be my motion with regard to, we are on item 27. I'm sorry.
No, that will be it.
Yes, 27, VAR 47302. Move to approve, subject to the additional condition or the amendment that the eight-foot wall would instead be a six-foot wall. And maybe the director can restate that a little more articulately.
I think you've done just fine. I think it's clear what your motion is and that the wall height shall be limited to six feet.
Thank you. We're ready for a vote then, please. A yes vote would be for a six-foot wall versus the eight-foot wall. Am I correct? Thank you, and that motion passes. Moving on to number 28, which was SUP 47504. Did we have a staff report on that already?
Yes.
Thank you, okay. Mr. Kessler, sir, you're...
We just need a motion. You've already heard that.
Oh, we need a motion on number 28, please.
I'm prepared to make that, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Item 28, SUP 47504. Move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to conditions.
And that motion passes, showing Commissioner Trinity abstaining at this time. And again, thank you for your kind words and Merry Christmas to you, sir.
Thank you, and I'll see you again shortly.
All good.
Madam Chair, those items are also final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you very much. Moving on now to number 29, which is variance 47323. The applicant owner is Kevin Ryan Klon for possible action on a request for a variance to allow the addition of a proposed 3,200-square-foot accessory structure, Class 2, that is not aesthetically compatible with the principal dwelling unit to a site containing two existing accessory structures with 920 square feet of combined floor area, where a maximum combined floor area of 1,593 square feet for all accessory structures is allowed at 6131 Meisenheimer Avenue. This falls in Councilman Ross's Ward 6, and staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we please have your report at this time?
Chairwoman Quinn, a variance is requested to allow placement of the proposed metal garage in the rear yard of the single-family residence. Site already contains existing accessory structures, including an 800-square-foot shade structure and a 120-square-foot storage shed. Addition of the proposed garage would exceed the floor area allowed for detached accessory structures in the RE Residence Estates District. In addition, the garage is proposed to have a tan-painted metal exterior that is not aesthetically compatible with that of the existing dwelling, which consists of painted stucco. As there are no hardships caused by the physical characteristics of the property and the requirements of Title 19 could be met, staff recommends denial of the request of variance. Please note that there are additional letters of support since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Gepkeke. Good evening, sir. Could you please state your name and address for the record and introduce your guest?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the Commission. Great to be here tonight. Gary Leobald, 2753 Laguna Seca, 89052. With me, Ryan Klon, who's the applicant and the owner of the property.
Ryan Klon, 6131 Meisenheimer Avenue.
I'm sorry, sir, could you speak into the microphone and just kind of take a little deep breath and cute little smile and talk a little louder?
Ryan Klon, 6131 Meisenheimer Avenue, 89131.
And this is your lovely residence?
Yes.
Thank you.
So this application is before you tonight because the current code calls for a relationship with accessory buildings that's based on the size of the principal structure. And that's somewhat variable. If you have a large house, you can have a larger accessory building. If you have a small house, you can't. And so you're going to have, there's a bill actually that's going to be before council on December 19th that will, if it's approved, appears that it will probably get approval, will apply a more rational approach to this in which the size of accessory structures will be proportional to the size of the lot and also more directly to the size of the rear and the side yards. So therefore, you're establishing a relationship that's based on the area of the lot, not on the size of the building on the lot. That bill is 2012-55. In this particular case, the applicant, once we get past, if this bill were to be already approved, really the only aspects, the bill will increase the side yard requirement to 10 feet from the current three feet, but the proposed building conforms to that. And so really, we're left with the issue of the aesthetic compatibility. To me, that means design, color, and materials. And the design, it'll have a 3-to-12 slope roof, which is identical to the main structure on the site. It will have a colored painted exterior that is identical to the main building on the site. So the issue really comes down to, you know, the fact that it's made of metal instead of stucco. It's separated by quite a distance from the main building. I'd say probably in the order of 150 feet. So there's not a direct relationship there where you're going to say, well, that's a metal building and this is a stucco building. Mr. Klon's gone and gotten letters of support from all the surrounding neighbors. And I think there was a comment I saw at one point where there was a concern that it could be used as a commercial operation. If you, some of the photos that have been rolling on the overhead here, the site is substantially more improved than that photo right now that you see. You can see there's a spa, and then behind that, kind of in line with the tree in the middle of the photo, there's a swimming pool that's being started. And so there's landscaping that's going in. This yard is definitely not going to be a commercial area. It's for my client's sand rails and other recreational vehicles that he's got, and that's what the, that's what the building is going to be used for. So we would ask for your consideration of this. Hopefully, you can do it as a final action, but I know Director Fag will be talking about that later. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have about the application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak from the public regarding this application? If so, please come forward now. If not, we'll close the public hearing and we're going to open it up to the planning commission. I just wanted to ask this young man, what was your name again, sir?
Ryan.
Ryan, so you built the house, and so you're coming to us without already building the structures, getting caught. These are, you're coming to us and asking us first if you can build them, am I correct?
Well, the house I just purchased in April.
Right.
And the structure, correct, it's not up yet. And yeah, definitely not...
Well, I just want to compliment you because for one year now, I've saw everybody that's come up here, we have, I'm not joking, we have the structure that's as big as this room, and then the guy goes, really? I couldn't build it on my property? And then we all sit here and we go, well, how are we going to tear this thing down, for God's sakes? And we usually can't. So I'm really proud of you respecting this board and respecting the people because it means a lot to me that you're doing it the right way. And whether it gets approved or not isn't the issue. The issue is, is that you're here doing it the right way, and it says a lot about you. So thank you very much. And I'll open it up now to my commissioners, sir. Commissioner Moody?
Madam Chair, through you, my first question is for staff, and it has to do with some of the supplemental information that was provided. There's a, there's a comment that says the minimum side yard setback of one of the existing structures is three feet. Is that the tough shed that we see in the photographs? Or maybe the applicant can tell me?
It's the shade cover.
Oh, it's the shade cover?
Yeah.
All right. And is that already in place? Looks like it is. Tell me, I was looking at that, through you, Madam Chair. If the applicant could just tell us, is that what we see back in the corner of the property?
Yes, it is. It's a cover for horses that was there when the applicant purchased the property.
Okay, so you didn't put this up?
No.
Again, I'll compliment you as the chair did. Thank you for, I'm glad we don't have to reprimand you for doing that. I would agree with Mr. Newbold that I'm less concerned with the size of the accessory structure and more with whether or not it's aesthetically compatible. I'm pleased that you're planning to paint it. Are you planning, are you painting straight over corrugated metal? Is there some type of finish you could put on it first to give it more of a stucco appearance?
I would assume there is, yeah. I was planning on just painting over it. The colors right now are pretty close. The main beams and everything, they're a little darker than the houses right now. So I planned on lightening those up to match the house. So, see, I don't want it, I don't want it to look bad either, so.
Yeah, and I think your neighbors would appreciate it. You know, I'll be honest, I came in tonight, these accessory structures somehow have become one of my pet peeves, but based on the fact that you live in an area where this type of thing is more common, you don't have any opposition. In fact, you come in with support for this because of the landscaping that you plan to put in, because of the neutral paint to match the house that you put on it, I'm prepared to make a motion to support your application. If you could do anything, I'm not going to make it a condition, but the more, the better looking you can make it, the better it's going to be for you and the neighbors. So if there is not any more discussion or comments, I'm prepared to make a motion, and that would be item 29, VAR 47323, move for approval.
That motion is for approval. Please cast your votes. That motion passes, and I just again want to compliment you. We don't see it here often or ever when someone comes in and does it the right way. And the way, when you do something like this at the early part of your life, the rest of your life is going to be just as honest and good. And thank you. It's great to do city work in the city of Las Vegas, and I hope you come back and build some more stuff with us. Congratulations, young man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you, commissioners, and happy holidays.
Thank you. Moving on now to related items 30 and 31, is variance 4783, the applicant owner is Canyon Ridge Christian Church for possible action on a request for a variance to install no sidewalks along Maverick Street, where sidewalks are required at 6,200 West Lone Mountain. This falls in Councilman Ross's Ward. Staff is recommending denial. The companion item is number 31, which is SDR 47308. And this is for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for the addition of four proposed buildings, additional parking lots, and the modification of an existing building. Staff recommends denial as well. And if we may, please at this time, have the staff report on both items, number 30 and 31.
Madam Chair, I just need to announce that these items also had a change in Ward between the date of publication. Originally identified as being in Ward 6, with the redistricting effort, these are now located in Ward 4.
Thank you very much. Staff?
Chairwoman Quinn, the proposed development to the existing church site would add four new buildings for fellowship and youth activities and repurpose two existing single-family residences for use as storage and as a parsonage. Parking lots would be added to the northwest corner of the site to provide parking for the anticipated growth of the congregation. The proposal, the proposal has deficiencies, including a lack of parking lot landscaping, which will result in a large area of unshaded asphalt, creating a large heat island effect in the area. There is adequate space on the site to provide the required landscaping and still exceed the minimum parking requirement. In addition, the applicant is requesting to eliminate the requirement for a sidewalk along Maverick Street. The elimination of the sidewalks along public streets is not supported by staff. It is contrary to policies 3.1.1 and 3.1.2 of the 2020 master plan, which support the presence of sidewalks to ensure pedestrian linkages within neighborhoods and to provide adequate access for the disabled. For these reasons, staff is recommending denial of both requests. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gepkeke. Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record and hello.
Hello, my name is Matt Molesbury, and I'm from Visionary Studios. I'm actually in Orange, California.
Nice.
So I'm actually representing Canyon Ridge Christian Church. Here I have Jeff Chevlin. He's also from Visionary Studios. I have Doug Parks from Canyon Ridge Christian Church.
You can push that microphone up. You're going to get a stiff neck here in a minute.
Yes. And I also have Steve Wilson from Canyon Ridge Christian Church.
Good evening, Mr. Wilson.
And I would just like to say that the church has been in existence here since 1998, and they've had several improvements and additions and expansions to the project. And they're a fast-growing church, and they've been very beneficial to the community, and that's why they want to expand more as being even more a benefit to the community. The phases, I just want to quickly just kind of go over just a couple of the phases, just because it's actually relevant to some of my discussion here. We have Phase 1 as being a chapel, and Phase 2 would be a youth building. Phase 3 would be, oh, sorry, a youth, sorry, Phase 2 would be a youth auditorium. Phase 3 would be a youth gym. And then 4 would be an expansion of parking. And then finally, there's a plan for a cafe fellowship. And that would be the entire plan build-out that we would like to have approved. Also, there is a variance, and that's actually item 30, that I guess we can talk about first. When we're doing Phase 4, which is the expansion of parking, is when we'd like to develop that entire area with the, the part with the curb and also the buffer, landscape buffer. So with that, we'd like to not have to build the sidewalk for a few reasons. The sidewalk itself would just extend into the land buffer area, for one. The residents don't really want to have a sidewalk on that side. That particular street is a cul-de-sac with residents on the west side, and we have the church on the east side. There's already a sidewalk on the residential side. If we put a sidewalk on the west side, it wouldn't actually be going anywhere. It wouldn't, we're not actually accessing the property from that side. So we'd like to use that area where the sidewalk would go and actually provide extra landscape area.
Well, thank you. Does anyone else wish to say anything?
That's, well, that's the, that's for item number 30.
Okay.
Do you want me to talk about item 31 first?
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, we'd like to just hear both of them, and then we'll do as well open it up for public.
Because they're too tied together.
Yeah, they go together, hand in hand, kind of like your church.
Chairwoman Quinn, my name is Jeff Chevlin, Divisionary Studios.
Good evening.
I can expand on the sidewalk issue. I think the biggest issue here is, it's part of the specific plan. You guys want to continue the sidewalk around. Duly noted, completely understood, actually. If I was in your position, I'd want the same. I think what we're actually asking for is, we see that the neighbors do not have a requirement nor a desire to have a hardscape sidewalk on the other side of Maverick, on the church side of Maverick. The curb actually would continue through, so you'd have a hard-line curb that would follow all the way around the cul-de-sac and on down to the adjacent street. Instead of sidewalk, we'd have just a landscape buffer continued five feet over.
Excuse me, the landscape buffer is...
The landscape buffer that is required on the property...
It would be a total of five feet.
We would actually have landscaping in lieu of that hardscape sidewalk.
And you're committing to a total of five feet there, sir?
I believe that's what the sidewalk was supposed to be.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is that accurate? Five-foot sidewalk. So in lieu of five, five feet of sidewalk, it'd be five feet of additional landscaping to the city.
Thank you.
And then I guess, moving on to SDR... And then I guess moving on to, uh, SDR, um, there is, um, a number of conditions, and we, uh, appreciate all the, the conditions, and there is just a couple that we'd like to, um, either, like to add to, um, maybe modify.
Excuse me, are you a little nervous?
A little bit.
Because you're, you're really doing a nice job, so just, um, take your time, because we're all listening to you very closely, so you're doing a nice job.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Um, so the, there's a few conditions that we would like to, um, just modify.
Okay.
Starting with actually condition number one, it is actually the same on both SDR and the, uh, VAR, um, they both read the same. Um, and it says, uh, "Conformance to the conditions of approval for a conditional, for a special use permit, U eight-eight-dash-nine-five shall be required." In that, uh, special use permit, it actually, uh, talks about, um, some modular, uh, a modular building that's on the site, uh, and, um, in, in the background information that was provided by the staff, uh, there is a number of extensions. Uh, it was actually just extended recently in July. But there's two parts to the condition, uh, one being the, um, the date, and the other one being, uh, talking about a Phase Two, uh, being completed. This Phase Two was part of a, um, a plan that wasn't even the previous plan, it was two plans ago, that, um, that phase doesn't even, uh, apply at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't even, we don't even, actually, no one knows what Phase Two is. Uh, the church, uh, doesn't recall what that is. Um, and so...
So, we'll clear that up with staff when it comes time for the motion?
Right.
Okay.
No, I'm talking about the staff of the church.
Oh, I see.
Doesn't know what the, uh, the condition, or that Phase Two, uh, was even for.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, and they've done, uh, some building since then. Uh, in fact, there was another, uh, um, SDR that was done in ninety, sorry, two thousand and four, uh, where there was a children's building, uh, that was constructed, and that wasn't Phase Two. So, we, we, no one really knows what that's for, and so what we like to do is actually modify the, um, the condition to be more up-to-date. And we'd like to change that to read...
Where is it? You're talking condition number one?
Condition number one, yeah, for both the VAR and the SDR, or they both read the same. We'd like to just modify it or add it to it and say, uh, "The thirty-six-hundred-square-foot modular building shall be removed when Building D is developed." On the site, you can actually see where Building D is. Uh, it is the east, the most east building, just south of Chapel. That is where the modular sits right now.
Okay.
And that's why we'd like to, uh, have that in the condition.
Okay.
The second thing that we would like to modify is, uh, condition number five, uh, states that "All off-site improvements and perimeter landscape buffers shall be installed as part of Phase One." Uh, the church would like to, um, as I was saying before with the variance, um, they're not planning on doing that development for the, the, uh, parking lot number seven, which is the, the northwest quadrant, quadrant of the site. Uh, they don't want to do that development until Phase Four. And so, what I'd like to propose is that, that, uh, that landscape buffer be constructed at the same time as the parking.
That makes sense.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
And so, we would like to add, or, sorry, strike out as part of Phase One and replace it at, for, uh, when parking lot seven is developed.
Okay. Sounds like you're making sense.
And then...
Are you forgetting anything? Because I think, um...
I think that's it.
I think that's it.
Yeah, we'd like to, uh, actually, uh, request for, uh, a motion for approval for both.
I bet you do.
I do, yes.
That I know. Um, so here's what we're going to do now. What we're going to do is we're going to, um, open it up to the public comment, um, and then, um, we'll open it up to the Commissioners, and they might have some nice questions for you, and I have a few comments to make, because I'm very familiar with that property, which is good for you, and, um, so is Byron. And so then, um, we'll do it that way, so that's how it works here. I don't know how it works in Orange, but, so right now, is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward. If not, we will close the public hearing, and we will open it up to your planning Commissioners. And, um, I just would like to make a, my first comment is, um, I think, uh, I don't think I realized until my daughter graduated from Faith Lutheran, uh, Junior, Senior High School last year, um, that this place existed for graduations for our high school, and Faith Lutheran is one, uh, one of the finest schools in town. It's so great that it's not big enough to hold its own graduation, so we use your facility. And, um, I understand the need for this place, and also, um, it, it, regardless of the fact that I have a friend sitting in the audience, I won't mention his name, there's not much landscaping out there in that parking lot or green space, but the reason being is there's so much parking, and you need that parking, and, um, I saw that parking being used the day my daughter graduated from high school. So with that, I'll open it up with my Commissioners, and I'm giving you a good start. Okay? Thank you. Nobody wanted to speak on it? Right? Nobody here to speak on it? Okay. Oh, Commissioner, um, Commissioner Farlow, I mean, Mr. Farlow?
Todd Farlow, two forty north, nineteen... Is there any way of putting some more trees out in that, uh, land, in the parking lot in order to, uh, to, uh, mitigate the heat sink effect?
Uh, you know what, Mr. Farlow, I got to tell you, there really is not, I, I, I'm just going to, I know we can't go back and forth, but because this is my last night as a chair, I'm just going to tell you on the square, it's already built out there, the parking lot, but what they're giving us is five feet of landscaping where a sidewalk is, which is really generous and really nice, and so, um, this parking lot is, is just, there's a lot of parking out there. So, um, anyway, um, we'll see what they have to say, but thank you, Mr. Farlow. Mr. Moody? Mr. Truesdale? Sleeping? Mr. Bonar, sir, this is your forte.
Question, uh, through you, Madam Chair, uh, to the staff. Has there been a comprehensive drainage study done on the entire property? And, um, the fact of not putting in the curb on the cul-de-sac, would that be affected if there hasn't been a drainage study?
Uh, through you, Madam Chair, Chairwoman. Uh, yes, there has been a, a comprehensive drainage study, and our condition, um, number seventeen requires that they update that master drainage study, and they are installing the curb, as I understand it, on the, uh, east side of Maverick, so that'll help with the drainage.
So, they are installing a curb, just not the sidewalk, is the request?
Correct.
Okay, and then that question of the applicant for clarification, the five-foot where the sidewalk was, I think you said, is in addition to what other landscape would otherwise be required, is that what I heard?
Correct, that is accurate.
Properly? Thank you. Um, I personally don't have a problem of, of not, or let's put it this way, I'd rather not have a sidewalk where it's not going to be used, because there's nothing on that, uh, site or that side of the road that would cause that sidewalk to be used, so I have no problem whatsoever with eliminating the sidewalk. Um, I, I do have a concern, though, about treating a large parking lot differently than a small parking lot, whether it's church on either end of that, uh, differently when it comes to parking lot landscaping internally. Um, it almost is more demanding on a larger parking lot than a, than a small one, because in a small one, you're closer to the perimeter landscaping anyway. And I've, I've worked with a few churches over the years, so, um, there shouldn't be a disparity between what you require in a parking lot on a large versus small, and you may want to talk about that. I think that's all the issues I, I wanted to talk about, but you might want to address the, the internal landscaping on the larger parking lot?
Uh, Commissioner, yes, thank you, Commissioner Bonar. Uh, should I...
Uh, just, I'll be sitting as chairman for a moment, and, uh, before you speak on this, I'd like to make a couple of comments as well. Uh, I agree with Commissioner Bonar on this, however, looking at what you already have existing versus what you're going to put in, uh, it's consistent with what's there. You're actually expanding your property by about one-fourth, and to, uh, require as many landscaping trees on the internal parking would definitely make that new portion completely different from the remaining portion, in my opinion. So, I'm comfortable with that portion. I also echo, uh, Commissioner Bonar's, uh, comments about Maverick Street, uh, the sidewalk, it's a sidewalk to nowhere, uh, as far as I'm concerned, as long as you've got the curb and the drainage there, I'm fine with that as well. Uh, I, I'm okay with your explanation on why you don't want to finish the improvements until it sounds like till you complete Phase Four of the project, when you get the, uh, the final parking lot in place there, and, you know, I can definitely, uh, figure out what you want to do in that regard. So, the way this is set up and the requests you're making, I think, are reasonable, uh, and you'll have my support for this.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Is that a motion, then? Please.
Uh, Madam Chairman, as it pertains to item number thirty, that would be VAR four-seven-four-eight-three, and again, uh, Director, I believe we do that on the SDR as far as that condition. So, I would go ahead and move to approve item number thirty.
That motion is for approval, please cast your votes. That motion is posted, and that motion passes.
Pertaining, uh, Madam Chairman, pertaining to item number thirty-one, SDR four-seven-three-zero-eight, I would like to move to approve it, uh, however, would like to modify two of the conditions. Condition number one is that the thirty-six-hundred-square-foot modular building, which I assume is presently existing, will be removed when Building D is constructed. As to condition five, I would move that also be, uh, that that also be amended to read that it, uh, that the improvements don't need to go in until parking lot seven is completed during Phase Four.
Madam Chair, through you, Commissioner Phlingis, if I might...
Your microphone's on.
Need someone else to turn theirs off, thank you.
Oh, I'll turn mine.
Um, what I might recommend, since both of those relate to phasing issues, if we could keep condition number one, there are some other elements of that condition that we need to have remain in place. What I'd recommend is that we, uh, eliminate condition number five and replace it with a condition that states that "A phasing plan shall be submitted to the Department of Planning for Review and Approval at or prior to permitting." Uh, and that way, we can wrap in the issue of both the modular structure and the perimeter landscape buffer, um, items at the same time as part of that phasing plan.
So, for the, the condition number one is modified, you're okay with, uh, Director?
Yeah, we'll leave that condition in place.
Okay, and then condition number five, we're going to just delete it and replace it with that, uh, the phasing plans be submitted?
To Department of Planning for Review and Approval at or prior to permitting.
Okay, I'll accept that amendment there as well.
Thank you.
With that said, you're, uh, with that said, I would go ahead and move for approval.
That motion is for approval, please cast your votes. And that motion, uh, is posted, and that motion passes as well.
Madam Chair, those items are final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you. Have a nice evening, Merry Christmas, and thanks for coming down.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Um, we're going to do, um, item thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four, and then take a short break, um, if that's okay. So, moving on now to item number thirty-two, SUP four-seven-two-three-three. The applicant is Steve Sevilla, the owner is the Rancho Self-Storage LLC. "For possible action on a request for a special use permit for an existing mini-storage facility with rental vehicles to be displayed in public view at thirty-two-ninety North Rancho Drive." I noticed that this has been redistricted, um, Director Flynn to Ward Five. Uh, staff is recommending denial of this request. Correct? Correct. Staff report, please.
Chairwoman Quinn, the subject site contains an existing mini-storage facility, facility with eight-hundred-and-nine self-storage units. The applicant wishes to provide rental trucks and trailers as an accessory use to the mini-storage facility. Within the C-two general commercial district, this use must meet several minimum requirements in order to operate, including the stipulation that no rental trucks or trailers may be displayed in public view. The applicant is requesting to be allowed to display one rental vehicle at the front of the property in view of Rancho Drive as a means of advertising the service. As a display of vehicles in public view is contrary to the intent of Title Nineteen, staff recommends denial of the request. If denied, up to eight trucks and trailers may be offered, uh, for rent from the property, but they may only be stored at the interior of the property and screened from public view. Uh, please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Gebke. Good evening, applicant, please state your name and address this evening for the record.
Um, I'm Mac McKnight, uh, four-oh-nine Firestone, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Hi.
Hi. In fact, by the way, we too like to thank staff, because for the most part, I mean, they've helped us, in fact, on that one photo where they had two, that's why we went with the one, yeah, because at first, we wanted to have two trucks up, in, in, displayed, and we've got the trucks in back, but we are trying to get one, in fact, on the, the one on the outside of the road, that's the one space that we wanted to get approval, where this, where you see it right there on the road. And the, the major reason for that is because even though you'll have the U-Haul signs and stuff like that, there, there are a lot of locations, but what happens is if you, they don't see at least one vehicle, they drive to the very next location where they see a truck. I know that, that, that sounds bad, but that, but that really is the case anymore. All storage has been there for, well, next month will be ten years, um, and it's, how I said, uh, it really is a good operation. It's, uh, other than, I, you know, we really just would like to request the one space closest to the road, and we'll actually even designate, or designate that and put for U-Haul truck only, and that will be where we park the one, the one vehicle, and it won't, I mean, that's the largest the vehicle will be also, because once again, you don't want a crowd, anybody, you want pedestrians and people to park there, you just don't want, they need, I know it sounds dumb, even though we have U-Haul, we've got it here, if they don't see the vehicle, they, they won't, they don't, they just don't pull in. And so...
Thank you very much. Is, um, we're going to open the public comment now, is there anyone here that wishes to speak on the item? If so, please come forward. Um, if not, we will close the public comment, sir, and we'll open it up to the planning Commissioners. And I just wanted to say briefly that I did, uh, because I do live on South Rancho, I drove down to North Rancho, and the, the place is immaculate. I mean, it's kept up, it's, I mean, it's paint, freshly painted, it's landscaped, I mean, you know, I, I was really surprised to see, uh, you know, not really surprised, but I really was surprised in this economy to see, you know, how well it was maintained, and I want to thank you for that. It, it looks so nice, so, thank you very much, and, um, we'll open it up now to my, uh, fellow Commissioners. Commissioner? I opened it up to the public hearing, no one wanted to speak, Byron?
I, I don't have an issue with it, um, with just one vehicle, I think you made your justification.
I appreciate that.
You just don't want them going down to Alexander and make that U-turn and going to that other one.
I'm not saying anything else, nothing against them.
You may need a lawyer.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
You are, you ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
On item thirty-two, SUP four-seven-two-three-three, uh, move for approval, to staff's recommendation and condition.
Thank you, that motion is for approval, please cast your votes.
Yes.
Post, and, uh, that motion passes, sir. Congratulations, and have a nice holiday season.
You guys too.
Excuse me, one...
Madam Chair, this item will go forward to City Council on January the twenty-third.
Okay, so I need to be here on the twenty-third?
On the twenty-third, yes.
On the twenty-third, yes. Thank you.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
We're going to take a short break now, if you don't mind, and we'll be back in about ten minutes or so, so, thank you very much. We'll be starting again in just a few minutes. I brought a good cake, and everybody's back there eating it, sorry.
We are ready. Everybody ready? Ready. Waiting for Director. Okay, moving on now to item number thirty-three. Is SUP four-seven-two-nine-three. The applicant is SLICE of Las Vegas LLC owner LVB Ogden Marketing LLC for possible action on a request for a special use permit for proposed two thousand seven hundred and thirty square foot tavern limited establishment at one fifty North Las Vegas Boulevard in Suite one hundred. This falls in Councilman Barlow's ward and staff is recommending approval. Staff.
Madam Chair, if I might, this is also one of the items that has been redistricted, advertised as being in Ward five, is actually now in Ward three because of the redistricting.
Okay, thank you.
And Madam Chair, I'm currently under contract with the applicant, so I'll be abstaining on this matter.
Thank you, Trinity. Staff.
Staff finds that the proposed use is compatible and harmonious with surrounding uses and recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Good evening, Mr. Kessler.
Good evening. Here on behalf of the applicant, Todd Kessler, three hundred North Las Vegas Boulevard. This is yet another restaurant slash bar that's going into the Ogden, which is formerly known as the Streamline on the corner of Ogden and Las Vegas Boulevard. This is directly or very close to Rachel's Kitchen, which was approved recently. SLICE is a operation out of New York City. They're in the Soho District. They do organic pizzas. They have a very big, organic, healthy menu. She is coming out here to open up her first second location ever, and she's very excited. It's gonna be a great addition to downtown. She's quite a unique individual, and if you saw in my justification letter, she plays the ukulele. And she will be playing the ukulele a couple nights a week. It's quite a sight to see. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. We'll open it now up to public comment. Mr. Farlow.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. Since Trinity can't say anything, I will. I'm really excited about what's going on downtown. I mean, a lot of people are, it's a change of life. The young people, they're putting off marriage and the kids and that, and they're moving downtown, and I like to see this. I'm really excited about it.
Thank you, Mr. Farlow. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this? If not, we'll close the public comment. We're gonna open it up to the Planning Commission. Commissioner Flankis.
Madam Chairman, seeing as there's no discussion on this, I would go ahead and for item number thirty-three, SUP four-seven-two-nine-three, and move for approval.
Thank you. That motion is for approval. Please cast your vote and please post it. And that motion passes, showing Commissioner Schlossman abstaining, and we wish her luck. Please tell her, thank you.
I will. Madam Chair, this item will go forward to the January twenty-third City Council meeting.
Thank you. Moving on now to SUP, oh, there you are, four-seven-two-nine-five. The applicant is the Northwest Ogden Corner LLC. The owner is LVB Ogden Marketing as well LLC for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed forty-five hundred square foot tavern limited establishment at one fifty North Las Vegas Boulevard, Suite Number one ninety. This falls in Councilman Barlow, but I'm sure Flynn's gonna let us know that it's changed wards.
Yes, Madam Chair, that is correct. This one is also advertised as being in Ward five. With the redistricting is now in Ward three.
Thank you. Staff recommends approval. Staff, may we please have your report?
Madam Chair, seeing as how I'm under contract with the property owner and will be bidding on projects here at the Ogden, I'll be abstaining on this matter.
Well, you're all flippant there, young man. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. May we have the staff report?
Staff finds the use to be compatible and harmonious with the surrounding uses and recommends approval.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Kessler.
Good evening again, Todd Kessler, three hundred North Las Vegas Boulevard. This again is in the same building. It's on a different location. This is on the corner of Sixth and Ogden. This is another tavern establishment. This is going to be what's called a part of our Inspire Theater series. Inspire Theater is similar to what the TED conferences are. I don't know if you know what the TED conferences are, but it's a kind of a forward-thinking, speaking series that comes through the nation, and we're gonna be hosting their events here in downtown Las Vegas. We have an Inspire Theater going on the corner of Fremont and Las Vegas Boulevard at the old Seven-Eleven. That's a bigger theater. It'll fit about two hundred people. This theater here itself will hit somewhere about seventy or eighty people. It's gonna mainly be, again, free speaker series where you'll have some phenomenal speakers that'll come in and talk about some incredible things that are going on, not only in the community in Las Vegas, but abroad.
Thank you very much. We'll now open that up to the public hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on that item? If so, please come forward. If not, Mr. Farlow. Okay, we'll close the public hearing and we'll open it up to the Planning Commission.
Through you, Madam Chair. I just wanna, I just wanna know what night is Plan and Commissioner speaking night.
Hey, let me just, let me just say this as part of the downtown project. I would love to get you guys to come out and talk a little bit about what you guys do, 'cause again, back to my comment to Chairman Person Quinn, I don't think people understand what you guys do. I don't think they understand how hard you work for what I'll say, very little compensation, if any, and the magnitude of the dedication that you guys do. So I'd love to have you out to speak. I really would.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. We really appreciate it, and we would all like to come. Thank you. Okay, so, we are looking for a motion on this.
Seeing there's no further discussion on this, Madam Chairman, pertaining to item number thirty-four, SUP four-seven-two-nine-five, move for approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you. The motion has been made for approval. Please cast your vote, showing, we'll vote, and we'll post it. And that passes again. Mr. Kessler showing that Commissioner Schlossman has abstained, and thank you, Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thanks for being so kind.
And Madam Chair, this item also goes forward to the January twenty-third City Council meeting.
Well, lucky, lucky, lucky. Excuse me, excuse me, could we get the timer? Excuse me, is the timer working, Madam Clerk? We're gonna give him a...
Give him three minutes and five seconds.
I'm really sorry. You have to read it. I can't.
Item number thirty-five, SUP four-seven-three-one-one, special use permit. Applicant is Casa de Luz, owner, The World Alive Church Incorporated, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed church slash house of worship at twenty-four-twelve Tam Drive. This is in zone, this is in Ward three, Commissioner Councilman Coffin's district. And the related item, number thirty-six, SDR four-seven-three-one-zero, this is for a public hearing. The applicant is Casa de Luz, owner, The World Alive Church Incorporated, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for the proposed conversion of an existing four thousand eight hundred square foot multifamily residential complex to a house of worship with waivers of the downtown centennial plan setback and architectural design standards on point one-six acres at two-four-one-two Tam Drive. This again is in Ward three, Councilman Coffin. At this time, I'd ask for the staff report.
Chairman, before we begin, I've been very involved with this charity through fundraising efforts and will be donating our construction services to them, and just being as involved as we are, I think it would be best if I would abstain on this matter.
Thank you. I'm flying now. Good evening.
Good evening.
Staff report, please.
Madam Chair, this site contains a three thousand six hundred and twenty-four square foot apartment building. The applicant proposes to convert this space into a church or slash house of worship. The site will retain a modified apartment for the pastor, which is ancillary to the church use. Waivers of the downtown centennial plan setback and architectural design standards can be supported since only interior renovations are planned and the existing building will remain. As the minimum requirement for a special use permit for the church are met and the proposed use can be conducted in a manner that's compatible and harmonious with the surrounding commercial and residential uses, staff recommends approval. Note, the notice was for a four thousand eight hundred square foot church. That included the courtyard area, eliminating the courtyard leaves three thousand six hundred and twenty-two square feet of building. Please note, we have received additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Evans. I apologize. When I saw you walking down here, the giggles were from love, and I miss you, and it's just really nice to see you, so I apologize.
Thank you very much. Steve Evans, seventeen oh five Cochran Street, Las Vegas, eight-nine-one-oh-four. And with me is Pastor Dan, and I'll have him introduce himself with your address.
Yes, Pastor Dan Winkler, twenty-four-twelve Tam Drive. I live in the, in the complex.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you. I'm gonna be brief, if you can imagine that.
We don't want you to be.
And I have the great honor of standing before you to, as a volunteer with the Casa de Luz project, to present their special use permit for a house of worship and the accompanying site development review. If you do not know, and you may wanna look at your backup material, the Casa de Luz Church is located essentially in the heart of the naked city. It's an urban church, and it has a remarkable story, the journey for the last thirty-six months, nothing short of a miracle, but I'll let others speak to that. I think the bottom line from a land use perspective is it meets all the conditions, and if I can just quote from the staff report, "The special use permit for the church are met, and the proposed use can be harmonious and compatible with the surrounding commercial and residential uses." And as Mr. Rankin indicated, this is actually for a lesser intensity than what was noticed. It's three thousand six hundred and twenty-four square feet. We have the architect here, if there's any questions. I don't anticipate any, but if you do. This project has been a labor of love for a lot of people. There are some folks here in the audience that are going to speak briefly about this process and how this community has come together in a labor of love to make something that thirty-six months ago I wouldn't have thought would be possible. And just for a little bit of background, I became acquainted with this organization a couple of years ago. I was impressed with what they were doing in an area that had very little happening for it. Last year, your colleague and I did a turkey drive and a toy drive on my birthday, and we sat down with Pastor Dan and said, "What is it that you need?" And he said, "Well, we could use like thirty-five turkeys." They have the rest of the package for the Christmas meal they get from Trader Joe's, but he said, "Last year, we ran out, ran out of turkeys." And they wanted to make sure that all the families, that their congregants that live in that immediate area had something for Christmas. So, said, "Yeah, we can do that." I think we had about a hundred and ten. And, and my house was so full of toys, we had to have a bus schlep them over there. As it turns out, we had too many toys. And so, the kids, I think at the direction of Pastor Dan and his son-in-law, Pastor Chris, and their remarkable volunteers, encouraged the kids to go to another area of town, kids who were disadvantaged, and to give those gifts to those kids. So, the stories just go on and on, and I, I don't want to even presume to be able to talk to you about the hope that this organization has created, but their very name, Casa de Luz, translated, it means "house of light," and they're providing light in an area that really didn't have any. Simply put, this is, this is a remodel of an existing aging apartment building. And through the efforts of the tradesmen, the architects, the HVAC people, the general contractor, and all of his contacts, people have either either reduced their fees, eliminated their fees, or donated their services. Gentlemen in the group is gonna speak to you about having brought together some of this community's most outstanding philanthropists and how they bought into it. The apartment was in foreclosure last year because they only rented the space. It's an effort where the Casa de Luz folks moved into an area specifically knowing that there was a substantial need. And through their ministry, it basically has, has grown. But they just rented this dilapidated space with a leaky roof, and it, the property owner went into foreclosure, and someone from the community stepped forward, an ordinary citizen, and bought it and turned over the deed to them. So, this group that the gentleman you're gonna speak to this evening, Mr. Miles Dickson from the Moonridge Group, will tell you about what they did and how they came to bring a substantial amount of money, hundreds of thousands, to renovate this building. But the bottom line is, for all the goodness they do, and they do an amazing job, it's a good land use fit. It's great for that neighborhood. Crime is down, and what a church should do, in my opinion, is reach out to their congregants and change the neighborhood. And I have, in my experience of a decade up here and twenty-plus years of watching the inner city develop and grow, and having that entire time seeing naked city take one step forward and two back, I've never really had a great deal of hope for it in my lifetime. And that has changed exponentially through this house of worship. And so, in any event, I wouldn't be standing before you today. Most of you up here know me. You know that I'm not doing this for money. I would not stand here and represent a project or a zoning matter if I didn't think it was good for my neighborhood. And I gotta tell you, this is as good as it gets. So, with that having been said, we read the staff report. We appreciate very much the staff's help and their recommendation for approval, and we accept all the conditions. So, with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but this is a remarkable journey, and these people are remarkable human beings. It's a good land use fit, and it belongs there, and we hope to get your approval.
Thank you very much, Mr. Evans.
Pastor Dan.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I thank you for, for hearing our request, and I also thank you for the staff approval at this point. There's not much I can add. You know, I don't think I could, that we could pay Steve for, for that description, and I just remembered, I don't think we are gonna pay you for that. No, but I thank him. He covered it quite a bit, but my wife, Melanie, and I live on-site.
Excuse me, sir, we're so happy to have you here, but I forgot to get your, your name and address for the record, for the clerk, please.
Yes. Pastor Dan Winkler, twenty-four-twelve Tam Drive.
Thank you. And you were talking about your lovely wife, Melanie.
Yes, my wife Melanie and I live on-site, and...
Oh, that's nice.
So, we've become known as grandma and grandpa to the children in the neighborhood, and most everyone in the neighborhood knows, knows us very well, and we know them. Unlike some neighborhoods with, with tall retaining walls, privacy walls, there are none in our neighborhood, and it's, it's a neighborhood of apartment complexes, so very few people have automobiles, and so it's a walk-up neighborhood, and so we meet each other and greet each other on the streets. And in addition to the Stupac Community Center, which is right behind the Stratosphere, and we're just around the corner from them, we work closely with them, and I, and I don't think I would be inaccurate by saying that the Stupac Center and Casa de Luz kinda make up the heart and soul of the neighborhood, the place where people meet. Even Metro, when Metro is looking for someone who may have committed a crime, they come to Casa right away to see if we've seen them, because they understand that we know most people in the neighborhood. We have come to love the neighborhood, especially the children, and we put our focus on them, and we would love to be able to stay, especially now that the building belongs to us. We don't have the threat that it would be sold out from under us, so now we would like to move forward with this remodeling plan and, and an approval.
Thank you very much, Pastor. We appreciate it. We'll now open it up to the public comment and anybody that wishes to speak. Please come forward. We have two microphones. Don't be shy. We'd love to hear from you. Come on down, girls. Wanna talk about it? We'd love to hear from you. And Mr. Farlow, sir.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. If any neighborhood in the world needs a church, it's this place, and my heart goes out to the pastor for coming down here and going into that neighborhood. It takes a brave man. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one more person, a couple more coming down, so... Oh, excuse me, sir. I didn't see you standing there. I just completely ignored you. What, please give us your name and address for the record.
Miles Dixon, three-eighty East Desert Rose.
Hi, Mr. Dixon.
Henderson, Nevada, eight-nine-zero-one-five. Madam Chair, Commissioners and Director, thank you for the opportunity. My name's Miles. My name's Miles Dixon. I am a Principal in Moonridge Group Philanthropy Advisors, which is to say that along with my business partner, Julie Murray, I have the good fortune of spending a lot of time advising foundations, individuals, and corporations on how to deploy their resources, typically around philanthropic giving or investing in ways that uplift community. Our firm's pretty active at the national and international level in global clean water issues as well as hunger. Locally, we're active in a number of issues, including the one that brings me here this evening. Back in January of this year, we had an opportunity to begin convening a number of key funders in our community, so the folks who, in most instances, provide more than a million dollars a year in charitable giving. Our effort and our intent with this organization is to identify game-changing opportunities that will fundamentally uplift and change the trajectory of people's lives in our community. This summer, we had an opportunity to bring our resources alongside Casa de Luz because our firm and our partners believe strongly that place-based initiatives are the most compelling way to break poverty. So, in that instance, we had the opportunity to bring our resources alongside and support this organization through, as Steve had mentioned, considerable capital expenditures. So, with that said, keeping it brief, we just hope that you'll bear in mind a number of private individuals' commitment to this organization as you consider this this evening.
Thank you so much for taking the time to come down.
Pleased to be here.
Thank you. Hi, sweetheart.
Hi. Good evening. I want to thank you all so much for your time, and we would like to thank the staff for everything that you did.
Sweet little name and address for the record.
Brianna Mackey, 8382 Tobanaway.
Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, the church project that you heard about earlier, Canyon Ridge, I was a member of their outreach team when Casa de Luz came into existence three years ago. And I had the privilege of working alongside the pastors and seeing what we believe is our faith truly lived out on a 24/7 basis. Over the last three years, the community has really transformed. We've talked about, and it's in the submittals that we thank Steve Evans so much for preparing, crime rates have dropped dramatically. We've seen kids for the first time who will be graduates of high school. They're thinking about going to college. We've got people who have come off of the streets, who were in gangs and prostitution and drugs. They've transformed their lives. They're now giving back to the community. They're working through programs that our church has helped develop. So, we're just honored that so many people in the community have tuned into what we're doing and have lended their support to projects like this. And we just thank you so much for your consideration and hopefully your approval tonight. We'd like to continue our good work in our church at Casa de Luz. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing. I'm just going to make a very brief comment. I've had the privilege to go to high school, and my children went to school with Julie Murray. And when you take someone like Julie Murray and you embrace it with someone like Steve Evans, you have what's called a win-win situation. And there's absolutely nothing that, it's almost like a, it's amazing that both people have come together to the same place to embrace your church because the only thing it's going to do is it's going to get brighter and brighter and brighter. And you'll see my full support, Mr. Evans, of course you know that. So, we'll open it up to the rest of our Commissioners, and thanks again for bringing this to us. Now I know what I'm going to do for my Christmas holiday. Thank you. Mr. Moody?
We use the word amen at the conclusion of a prayer to state our agreement, and all I have to say is amen.
Thank you. Commissioner Trusso?
I'd like to hear some more information about the mission of the church. And I'm pretty confident that I know this neighborhood as well as anybody in this room and spend time going through there two, three times a day, commuting through there and working through there. And I'd like to understand the mission because a lot of what you're saying is happening in there is still not any better than it was six months or a year ago. So, if you could tell me what the mission of the church is. Your facility here is almost half residential and half kitchen, and the church portion is very small. So, is it a food center? Is it, please, Pastor?
I will defer to Pastor Dan, but I can just give you my knowledge of what they do and how often they do it, and the belief that it is changing lives in there. I know that twice a week, Trader Joe's, and I believe a bread company, provides fresh produce and day-old bakery bread. And twice weekly, I know they distribute it to their congregants, ensuring that no one in particular family hoards it or anything of that nature. I have, I go to the end of their worship services on Sunday, and it's pretty lively. I can tell you that. But what's heartening to see is the people in that neighborhood who didn't have any worship opportunities, who seem to be taken under the wing of these folks. What hooked me, and Brianna could probably better address this than I could because she's the super volunteer. I believe it's twice weekly, they gather the kids' clothes. And with the volunteers from the area, I don't know whether it's the other mothers or what, they take the clothes to the laundromat, and with stacks of quarters, they wash them. They dry them, and they fold them, and they return them. So, the kids have clean clothes to go to school. The nearest laundromat is two miles. No one has a car in there. The coin-operated laundry facilities in these apartments were previously jacked up by drug addicts. So, basically, they don't exist. The grocery opportunities in the area, 7-Elevens is the main grocery opportunity. They have vans that I know transport folks to big-box grocery stores so that they can stretch their dollar budget. The little laundry thing, it sounds like a simple, small thing. It's huge. I mean, these kids couldn't go to school clean. And you know what it's like to be a young kid and go to school with dirty clothes. So, that's just one example of how I see them changing this neighborhood. They identified a problem, and then they identified a solution. But I'll let either Pastor Dan or Brianna speak to the specifics because they would know far more than I.
Commissioner Goines?
If I could just, I thought we were going to find out if Pastor Dan was going to tell us some of the mission of the church.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, our mission is not unlike most churches, except that our focus is not on building our campus or anything like that. It's much smaller in scope in that respect. It really is to bring hope to the people there who have felt hopeless, especially the children. And so, we try to meet their needs. In the New Testament, Book of Matthew, in chapter 25, Jesus speaks about, "I was hungry, and you didn't feed me; I was thirsty, and you didn't give me a drink; I was naked, and you didn't clothe me; and I was in prison, and you didn't visit me." And the people he spoke to said, "Well, we didn't see you there." And he says, "Well, if you didn't do it to the least of mine, you didn't do it to me." And he went on to say the opposite of that. So, and this is not a Bible lesson, it's just that what we're trying to accomplish is to help the people who are in need of clothing to, you know, help find them some clothes. And that comes from donations from people at just the right timing. In fact, on this coming, this next weekend, we'll be giving away a couple hundred jackets to the kids, and so they'll have warm clothing going into the winter. The food is just to meet some people's needs, basic needs, and we can only give what we get, and we're by no means a social service. We're just a church that tries to meet the needs of some people who will come in from our neighborhood. And we don't eliminate anybody, whether they're from some other part of the city or whether they're of a different faith. That matters not to us. If they're hungry, we're going to try to feed them or give them some food to take home if we can. The laundry was something that I thought, well, actually, my daughter Laura and Brianna and some others started that ministry, and I thought they were crazy. But one of the trips that they made to the laundry, the poundage of clothes exceeded 5,000 pounds on one trip to the laundromat. So, that's a huge ministry. So, when they go, they take ladies from the neighborhood, and while the clothes are drying, they talk with each other about their problems, and we try to find them solutions. It's just something that, we were led there, we feel, by God, and He put it on our heart to stay there, and at just the right timing, people have stepped up to help keep us there. And so, I'm not sure if that would explain our mission. One of the things we want to do is to get Christians who are comfortable to sit in the pews, to kind of get them out of that comfort zone and into true face-to-face ministry like they're supposed to. It's kind of the football effect where, this is a quote from a pastor at Crossing Church. He said that church leadership, which would include myself, "Our challenge is to reverse the football effect where we see 22,000 people in desperate need of exercise, watching 22 people on the field in desperate need of rest." And that is taking place in many of the churches today where hundreds and even thousands of people sit and watch a handful of people do the face-to-face, on-the-street, frontline work of ministry. And so, Casa de Luz is kind of a hub to bring churches around the valley together to move them into meaningful ministry.
Thank you very much. Does that answer your question, Rick? Thank you. Commissioner Goines?
I just think it's great work. Again, just for clarification, I went to school with Julie Murray since first grade through high school, so I know her. And I think Miles, I don't know if you remember me at the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Commission or Homeless Coalition meeting where you guys made the presentation. I was the one who gave you the card when I asked, "Had Julie left already?"
Yes, yes.
And Miles is Julie's partner in the Moonridge Group.
Yep, very aware. And what I wanted to say is, he, at that meeting, he had an interesting presentation and statistics built around homelessness and programs that are used to address homelessness. And he used, and I believe, and you probably could tell me more, he's done studies all up and down the West Coast, and he spoke about his outreach efforts in some of the hard-hit homeless areas of Los Angeles and some of the accomplishments there. And I thought it was compelling because every day, I ride down Orange Street by A Street, and I observe homeless folks that are in an encampment right off the side of a freeway. And I often think about your programs and how can we get some of that over there. And what really brought it home for me was last Thursday, through my company, I attended the Project Homeless Connect stand-down at Cashman Field where we served approximately 3,000 folks from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And my mission at that event was the co-chair of the job readiness section, where we set up a section and had employers that were actually hiring people right on the spot. But that's what it takes to use the village concept. It takes a village to raise the child. And that's where it starts. It starts right there at the child. That's where you're going to change the mindset and what you're doing with your program. So, I'm all for it. It's one of those things that, you know, it's in your heart and it's a calling, and I wish you much, much success.
As do I.
Thank you. And it's a good land use fit. I'd like to add.
Let me just ask, what time's church on Sunday?
10:30.
I'll be there this Sunday.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're ready for a motion. Ready for a motion?
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Flengus, thank you.
Madam Chairman, it's my pleasure tonight on item 35 to recommend approval, subject to all staff's conditions, and that's SUP 47311.
That motion is for approval, and the yes vote is for the approval, Pastor.
And Madam Chairman, on item 36, SDR 47310.
Excuse me, that motion passes showing that Trinity has abstained, and one vote no. Thank you. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I don't think we need to recast the vote if you would like.
Oh, I didn't mean.
I'm willing to say I voted no because I disagree with the premise of what's been presented, and that's my right to do. So, I appreciate it this evening.
I'm sorry.
And it's a happy holiday season.
Well, you didn't seem very happy about it, Rick, so I'm very sorry.
Madam Chairman, item 36, SDR 47310, again moved to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you. Please make your votes. And that motion passes showing Commissioner Trinity abstaining. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you, and I'll see you Sunday, 10:30.
Happy holidays, folks. Thank you.
Madam Chair, these items go forward to the January 23rd City Council meeting.
Thank you. We're moving on now to item number 37, which is SUP 47322. The applicant is Shamruin Yan, owner, John Napoli, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for proposed tattoo parlor body piercing studio use at 1737 South Las Vegas Boulevard. I just, is there an applicant here for this item?
Anything made a difference?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I'll start over because there was a lot of talking going on around me. I missed what I was talking about. So, it's SUP 47322. The applicant is Shamruin Yan, owner, John Napoli, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for proposed tattoo parlor body piercing studio use at 1737 South Las Vegas Boulevard. This is in Ward 3. Commissioner Coffin and staff is recommending approval on this item. May we have the staff report, please?
Chairwoman Quinn, this is a request for a special use permit to allow tattoo parlor body piercing studio use on the first floor of an existing tenant space within the downtown Centennial Plan area. There are no minimum special use permit requirements for a tattoo parlor, and the proposed use is appropriate for the site and can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding uses. Therefore, staff recommends approval. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you. Mr. Capri, good evening, applicant. Could you state your name and address, sir, for the record?
Shamruin Yan, 213 Grand Falls Bluff, North Las Vegas.
Okay. So, could you tell us a little bit about your project?
I just moved there like not long ago, about seven years now.
Is this your first tattoo parlor?
No, this is my second one. The first one--
Seventh?
The second one.
Oh, second.
And my first one was during the bad economy. It went down.
Oh, okay.
But I'm trying to start new. Basically, I want to make it look a little different than the regular tattoo shops. Want to bring more upscale artists, more like custom work, not like biker shops. More like family-oriented. We have, basically, right now, I'm partners with four shops, Las Vegas Tattoo Lounge, Executive Tattoo Lounge, also LV Tattoo Lounge, and Cincy Inc.
Okay, thank you. We're going to close the public hearing now, which is, I mean, we're going to open the public hearing and hear from Mr. Farlow and anyone else that wishes to speak on this item from the public.
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. My issue is the saturation issue. Didn't we just approve a tattoo parlor not too far from here? About two months ago?
Staff?
Madam Chair, in looking at the immediate area, there are approximately eight to nine tattoo parlors within about, I'm guessing about a 3,000-foot radius here from the site. So, we do have a number of tattoo parlors here in the immediate area.
Thank you.
Well, and that would be my concern is the saturation issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak? If not, we will close the public hearing now and open it up to the Planning Commission. Commissioner Schlossman, sir?
Yes, Madam Chair. I actually have the map sitting in front of me, and there's nine within a 2,500 radius of this area. within a 2,500 radius of this area. And I heard a lot of comments from the people from Beverly Green and about the saturation up and down Las Vegas Boulevard in this immediate area. We have distance separations on several protected uses such as massage parlors, toddleons, bars, and so we don't get the saturation within one particular area. And we got to look at the goals of the redevelopment area and the area primed for redevelopment right along Las Vegas Boulevard. I just feel unless we create a district, a tattoo parlor district or like the Fremont East District, that the saturation doesn't necessarily benefit that area. And I have to listen to all the residents that are in that particular area. So, I'll listen to my colleagues, see what they have to say, but I'm not sure if this will see my support tonight.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Moody, sir? Commissioner Truesdale? Commissioner Boner, sir?
Just a general question. These are really flattering and I have a son who's taken advantage of one more often than I would like him to have done. I wonder what the exit strategy is and is it just as easy to get tattoo removal allowed as it is to get them approved?
That's a really good question, Commissioner Bonar. Do you know the answer to that? Can you, is it easy to get these things off once you get them on?
Well, there are laser removals and there are tattoo procedures to remove them and also we do a lot of cover-ups.
Right. Oh, okay. Well, that's good to hear. Cover-ups are good. Okay, Commissioner Goines?
No comment. No ink here, baby.
Commissioner Schlossman, it's yours tonight, sir.
Yeah, Madam Chair, and it's not against, anything against tattoo parlors or anything. It's just about the saturation area and from what I'm hearing from the local residents. So, I mean, due to those findings, I'm going to have to make a recommendation for, and a motion for denial.
Thank you. That motion is for denial. A yes vote will be for denial. Please cast Thank you. That motion passes, but it fails. In other words, you lost. Sorry.
What do you mean by pass and a loss?
Flynn?
The motion was to deny the application, and so the application has been denied by a vote of six to one.
Okay.
This item is final action unless appealed within 10 days.
How would I do that?
Appeals are filed with the city clerk's office, and again, that needs to be done 10 days from today.
So, I just got to go to the city's court?
You contact the city clerk's office, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Moving on now to number 39. Applicant is Cash Mac LLC. The number is SDR 47203. Owner, Las Vegas Mini Grand Prix, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for proposed 50-foot tall, 497 square foot illuminated freestanding on-premise sign at 1401 North Rainbow Boulevard, Ward 5. Councilman Barlow's Ward unless it's been redistricted. Staff recommends approval on this item.
Madam Chair, just to clarify, no, this item has not been redistricted.
Thank you. Staff?
Madam Chair, Title 19 allows signs next to freeways to exceed the 40-foot height maximum as part of an approval by this board and the city council. Staff finds that the 50-foot sign would not be overly obnoxious and recommends approval. Please note, we have received additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Good evening, applicant. Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Barton, 7816 Purple Mountain Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada. I'm vice president and managing partner of Las Vegas Mini Grand Prix. We've been looking at a sign out there on the freeway since we don't have one. We've been there almost 20 years now. And the technology and the price kind of came together to fit into our parameters along about the same time that 95 was totally remodeled, which blocked a lot of the view to our property from the freeway. Originally, we built the, this project in 1993. We had very good views from the freeway, which is just a plus for us. I mean, that's why we picked out that piece of property. So, we think, you know, in this day and age, to have a business with no sign in front is something that needs to be addressed for us. And we're asking that we be allowed to raise the limit 10 feet. My property is actually about 11 feet below the freeway. So, it's not like the sign's going to be very tall. All the signs in our area are actually much taller than mine. We are abutted to the north by the Las Vegas, Vegas Drive overpass. And actually, as you're driving south, you'll be able to see our sign under the overpass. That's how small it is.
Thank you very, thank you very much, sir. It was a nice explanation. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward. If not, we'll close the public comment and we'll open it up to the Planning Commissioners. Councilman, Commissioner Barlow, I mean Commissioner Goines, sir?
I'm satisfied and ready to support the request.
Great.
On item 39, SDR 47203, move for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you. That motion is for approval. Please cast your vote. And that motion passes. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Have a nice Christmas.
You too.
Madam Chair, that item will go forward to the January 23 City Council meeting.
Thank you. Number 41.
Forty.
Forty's been, has been held.
We're on 42.
Yeah, we're on 41. Number 41 is SDR 47294. The applicant is Ryland Homes of Nevada LLC, owner RB Hillside LLC, for possible action on a request for a major amendment of an approved site development plan review, SDR 8635, to add alternate model home plans and allow an eight-foot garage setback where six feet or less or 18 feet or greater is required for 30 lots at the southwest corner of Alexander Road in Clark County, 215. This falls in Councilman Anthony's Ward. Staff is recommending denial. Has this ward been changed, Director? Thank you. May we have the staff report, please?
Chairwoman Quinn, this request would increase the minimum garage setback from six feet to eight feet for 30 lots within the subject subdivision. Staff opposes the request as the increased setback will encourage parking in driveways that are not designed to accommodate vehicles resulting in the blockage of sidewalks and streets. The new models being proposed could be redesigned to fit the lots as approved, therefore, the request is self-imposed. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Gepke. Good evening, Mr. Gronauer.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Commissioners, my name is Bob Gronauer, 8345 West Sunset Road. In this matter, I'm representing Ryland Homes. As you may be very familiar with this site, I've been working on this property, unfortunately, since 2005 with several different developers. I believe, hopefully, tonight is the good news is that this is the last time I may be coming back before you, especially on Ryland's behalf with respect to what we are requesting. Back in October, we made a similar request, as we mentioned to you, to reduce a garage setback or, excuse me, increase it from six feet to eight feet on one of the three models that we're proposing for the subdivision. We're asking for 30 more lots that we are able to obtain under contract from the land banker. And these are the last final 30 lots that we're able to purchase within the subdivision here. And we would like to have the ability to use one of the three models on those lots if a, if a home purchaser would like to do so. So, this request has been approved previously on a couple of other occasions. I'd ask you to follow the if-approved staff's recommendations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gronauer. We'll open it up now to the public comment. If there's anyone here that wishes to speak on this item, please come forward. If not, we will close the public comment and open it up. Good evening, Mr. Farlow.
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Just out of curiosity, say one of the tenants had three visitors come for a party or something. Where did they park?
You know what? Is it okay if I let Mr. Gronauer answer that because I really don't know?
Yeah. The streets, you have parking on both sides of the streets. So, you have street parking. That's there.
Thank you very much.
But the residents I've taken are not allowed to park in the street. Is that correct?
Well, probably one or two cars are, but not 10. You know, they have a couple.
I just don't think that on-street parking is right, Chairwoman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Farlow. Okay, so, we're looking at, Mr. Flankis, sir? Commissioner Flankis?
We've already done this before and, you know, we approved it before and I see no reason not to at this juncture. And if there's no further comments, I would like to go ahead and move to approve item number 42, excuse me, item number 41, which is SDR 47294, subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you. That motion is for approval. Please vote. That motion passes and, so it passes.
Thank you very much, and I want to wish all of you a happy holiday season and an upcoming Happy New Year. See you next year.
Same to you, Mr. Gronauer. Thank you very much.
And Madam Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on now to Director's Business. Applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas. The election of the 2013 Planning Commission officers, I don't know what anybody else has to do, but I think it's only fair that we, that I am going to nominate Gus Flankis, my co-chair, as the chairperson of the 2013 Planning Commission. And if anybody has anything to talk about or to discuss, we'll hear from you now. Thank you. With that.
Can I hear Gus's speech? I'm sorry.
With that, we'll look for a motion from Commissioner Goines.
Madam Chair, I would second that motion for the nomination of Commissioner Gus Flankis, Chairman 2013.
Thank you. The motion is for Gus Flankis for the chairperson of the 2013 Planning Commission. Please cast your vote.
I have to abstain.
I think you might.
Well, you vote.
Oh, you can vote for yourself. Anyway, that motion passes. Congratulations, Gus.
Thank you.
You'll do a great job.
Thank you very much.
Moving on now to the Vice Chair.
I love the chairman.
Oh, that was.
And I just wanted to take this time to thank you for all of the time that you've spent, Chairman Quinn, because I know that it's awful hard to get, to do all this work. It takes a lot of time out of your, out of your life. And I want you to know that I appreciate it very, very much. Thank you.
And you know what, Todd? I know you do. Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it. Moving on to the Vice Chair, it's seeing fit that I'm going to nominate Commissioner Moody, who stands in line now to move to the next position, which is the Vice Chairman. So, I'll be nominating Commissioner Todd Moody for the Vice Chairman of the City of Las Vegas 2013 Planning Commission. If anybody wishes to nominate someone else or talk about it, that's up to you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to talk about it.
Oh, good.
Briefly, and offer my nomination for Commissioner Moody as Vice Chairman.
Thank you. Is that a, would anybody else like to say anything?
That's a motion.
That's a motion. That motion is for Mr. Moody. Please cast your votes.
Is there hanging Chad somewhere?
And that motion passes. Congratulations, Commissioner Moody. It'll be a privilege and a pleasure for you to take that seat. It'll add to your wonderful resume of other boards that you sit on. I hope your wife knows about this. We have one more. It's text amendment 47390. The applicant owners the City of Las Vegas for discussion and possible action to amend Title 19.12 regarding wireless communication facilities to confirm to the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996. And at this time, may we please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, earlier this year, as part of the middle tax, the middle-class tax relief bill, an amendment was introduced that requires that the co-location of new transmission equipment, removal of transmission equipment, or the replacement of transmission equipment must be approved by local entities. This will, this amendment will bring the city's regulations into conformance with the federal law that requires us to approve such items. And those modifications that are less substantial changes are permitted by right. The federal government didn't specifically indicate what those co-locations would be, but they are referring to other sections of the Telecommunication Act in relationship that anything under 10% in size or number of antennas would meet the standard that they might look for if they were to hear one of these items before the FCC. So, the city is adopting that, those guidelines, and will be changing our procedure. Our current procedure is a little different. We review each co-location as a separate item administratively, and then the council offices review those items. And if they wish to hear those items, they appeal them forward and they are placed on an agenda as a public hearing item. In this case, that would no longer occur, and those co-locations and minor changes would be approved administratively.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Well, is there anybody here that wishes to speak on that item? Mr. Farlow? Okay, thank you. We'll close the public comment and open it up to the Planning Commissioners.
Madam Chair, I think this may be the city attorney or for Mr. Rankin. I thought our code that we adopted when we went through this addressed the issues with the 1996 Telco Act. And that act provides for cities to provide its standards, whether they're greater or more restrictive or not, as long as the city has a consistent standard.
Through you, Madam Chair. When we, yes, when we adopted those standards, they were in conformance to title to the FCC Telecommunication Act. But they have amended that act. Every year, there is a bill that goes before Congress to actually request that zoning ordinance do not apply to telecommunication towers. Fortunately, none of those bills have passed. But in this case, there was an amendment made to the middle tax, middle-class tax relief bill that does require us to approve any co-location by right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishes to speak? If not, we'll take a motion on that, Commissioner Goines. How about a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve item 44, TXT 47390, subject to all recommendations and conditions.
Thank you. That motion is for approval. Please cast your votes. And that motion passes. And now we move on to the final part, which is citizens' participation.
Madam Chair, if I might, I just need to announce that this item, number 44, will go forward to City Council and ordinance forum.
Okay, that's nice. City, citizens' participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come forward to the podium and give your name and address for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject as well as the amount of time of any single speaker is allowed may be limited. Is there anyone that here who's wished to speak? That would be you, Mr. Farlow.
Madam Chairman, I just would like to say that it's been a pleasure working with you as chairman this year and just want to say, job well done.
Thank you, sir.
And enjoyed it.
It's been fun. Thank you.
I'd like to echo those same comments.
Thank you.
Vicki?
Me?
Yes. You've done an incredible job this year.
Rick.
I really believe that, and I want to thank you for all your work and hard effort.
So, you want to make up right here, right now?
No, we're still passionate about differences of agreement.
Well, no, I mean, we just fight and it's just, you know.
It's like, you did a great job.
I mean, it's like being married, Rick.
You have done, you have done a great job.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
We've got Preacher Evans up there.
And thanks for all the goodies you bring during the year, too.
You're welcome. You know, it's been fun and it's over and I'm going to hit this gavel. I'm going to call this meeting over and I'm going to hand it to my buddy here.